All right, I've been asked to advise our YouTube audience. There is nothing wrong with your machine, it's us. So we will be audio only until such time as they can find that bug and kill it. And first order of business, I am calling this meeting to order. The Apprehension Allegiance today will be led by Commissioner Mark Gardner. And as he, as he leads you in the pledge, please remember what day it is. This is a very somber day for, for us. In that there are so many of our young people died on the beaches of Omaha. And that please keep them in, in your, in your thoughts as we do the pledge. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was going to mention that as well. And rather, while it is a somber day, we must be thankful for those men and women who gave their lives for the liberation of Europe on that day. So anyways, with that, please join me in saluting and pledging allegiance to the greatest flag on earth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. The County Board of Commissioners conducts the business of Douglas County and its citizens during its meetings. The board may impose reasonable content-neutral restrictions on publicly comments, such as comments that are on topics that are not within the jurisdiction or authority or control of the Board of County Commissioners, or if the content of the comment is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of other speakers. The presiding officer may order the removal of any person whose statement or other conduct disrupts the orderly, efficient, and safe conduct of the meeting. Warnings against disruptive comments or behavior may or may not be given prior to removal. Hand clapping, making remarks or gestures from the audience that may be, that may interrupt, interfere, or prevent. I hate it when the computer does that. I don't know what the heck we're preventing. Any speaker from commenting should not occur, end quote. Okay, now that I've done that part of it, we are now open for public comment. Anyone who has public comment, please step up to the dais. And to be able to speak, you need to hit the button that shows ahead.
Wes, reserve the temporarily paused meeting. It's difficult to complete.
Okay, we're pausing again. Smoke the paper out of them. No, don't do that.
Well, that was called a false start.
That was, you almost, almost kicked it off. Was, was you were, I was talking about speaking lunch. You do have a minute.
I'm counting, I'm counting.
Yeah, it's, it's all been recorded.
Video, audio, the only thing is if people want to watch it, I have to join Zoom at this moment. But we are almost at the audio backup and video.
If we can't figure it out, we can just go ahead.
And I can, I'll bet it with. We have.
Oh, nice. Yeah. They have to be four. Where were you?
Going back to some of the recent pictures of my great friend.
Oh, was you guys, okay. They are watching it in the office. They, they said, hey, Terry, what's going on? I don't know.
What's this?
They know, the audio is back.
Audio is back, okay? No video.
Nope.
We'll get that.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, it's Troy. I think they've called it take two. We'll give it, if, if you're willing to give public comment, good luck.
The thing on, okay. Good afternoon to everybody. Good to be here. I'm going to make some overarching comments that might have some connectivity.
Would you give your name for the?
Oh, sir, sorry about that. My name is Gene Robinson. I'm out of Sun Ridge subdivision there in North County. Good afternoon again. I'm going to give some, some overarching comment that might have some connectivity to what we'll be discussing later that need to, is overdue, that these comments need to be said here in public. I'll be as brief as I can. I just want to say that since the pandemic, unelected agencies have become completely out of control with respect to Public Lands Act since the pandemic. Namely, the Forest Service, the National Park Service, and others have used public lands access to get Americans to accept a more authoritarian control of themselves as part of a much larger agenda. Unelected agencies are out of control. This includes the Tahoe Transportation District, the U.S. Forest Service, NDOT, and the Lake Tahoe Basin Management Unit. Reservation-only campgrounds, day use, and parking facilities bring unequal outcomes for those who are dispossessed of over-the-top phone technology and/or credit cards, and is inherently discriminatory. Physically spontaneous access for physically challenged persons who arrive early at public facilities and meet the crowds are thrown out of deserted campgrounds and day use areas for lack of having a reservation. Those who have had major orthopedic surgeries or do not know from one day to the next that they will be functional enough just to get outdoors, just to get outdoors and meet with these roadblocks with all reservation system. So the untenable excuse that maintaining first-come-first-served access is too onerous or maintaining self-pay cash kiosks where fees exist is not acceptable. At Lake Tahoe, I know of folks who have tried for six years to land a slot and fall asleep campground, had it failed under the all-reservation system. That is inherently discriminatory. Peak period pricing, supply and demand pricing, congestion pricing, whichever wish you named to label it. Last July, the U.S. Forest Service at Lake Tahoe used additional security as an excuse to spike day use fees at U.S. Forest Facility, U.S. Forest Service facilities at Lake Tahoe. But a staffer in Public Affairs called it supply-demand pricing. I was appalled, the support practice of spiking access fees to suppress visitor numbers or to generate revenue was put in place, and it needs salved immediately. I've asked Representative Amadee of the Appropriations Committee to use a seat to slash the budget of the U.S. Forest Service at Lake Tahoe to get them to moderate their policies back to pre-pandemic parameters. I'm about ready to close out here. I have. I also look forward to lawsuits to correct the overreach of these unelected agencies with respect to public access at Lake Tahoe. So I'll close out with that. I'll have other remarks later to the items on the agenda. Thank you for listening.
Good morning, Ellie Waller. I'm not sure if I'll be in attendance this afternoon. Don't know how fast this meeting is going to go, so I'm commenting in support of item number four. Action Douglas County has begun the process to conduct a feasibility study for the implementation of a parking program at various Tahoe sites. The program will require cooperation. This inter-local agreement sets forth the terms of the pilot program for parking in an area until the completion and acceptance of the feasibility study. This agreement outlines the distribution of net proceeds to be distributed 40% to the school district, 40% to Douglas County, and 20% to the parents' club. My question is, what Douglas County fund will the 40% collected be allocated to? And for what purposes? I don't want it to go to microtransit. Next, item number seven for possible action, increase of rates, fees, and charges by community development. I endorse and hope you will choose the immediate increase on July 1 by 14%. I want to thank Douglas County for putting the survey on a better option for the Justice Center design out there, hoping lots of people have seen it. The two newer designs seem more appropriate, in my opinion. It would be nice to see Douglas County representatives at the League Legislative Committee for the Oversight of TRPA at their meeting tomorrow, June 7th, commencing at 1:00 P.M. At the TRPA offices at 128 Market Street. If you can't make that, there's two upcoming meetings, one in July and one in August. There's many things that affect Douglas County in Tahoe. I know the strategic plan and plans and budget meetings have taken enormous amount of time from the county manager's staff and the board's attention. I'm requesting that one of you request a follow-up presentation from the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, and Sidekick Tahoe Chamber, the non-transparent pass-through of the dollars between LTVA and TDVA. I'm likening to the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency's Environmental Improvement Program. I'm reporting millions of dollars, 34.3 million to be specific, as reported in their 2023 annual report and federal funding. Also has issues that will go before the Oversight Committee. Where are the deliverables and accountability? I'm requesting the Audit Committee and also one of you request the task to go before the Audit Committee of LTVA/TDVA. Lastly, I will close. There was some event, big event in Tahoe that hasn't been really reported in the media, and I'm hoping that we will see something in the news about beach closures and what issues happened up there. Thank you.
Morning, Jim Jackson. First, I would like to thank Commissioner Gardner and Commissioner Tarkanian for being at the event that Nathan Talbot put on regarding Painted Rock Mine about a week ago. I think there was a lot of good comments that came out of public at that point and a lot of actionable items that we can use. So thank you again for being there. We appreciate that. You have a copy of this, which was notes from the Johnson Lane newsletter that goes around. I don't agree with every one of the comments on there, but the first two were the ones that I thought were important. East Valley and Fremont, which is not a road that can handle large trucks, has seen an increased traffic of Knox vehicles and Garnet vehicles. And like they said, five or six minutes between them. And all day long, lots of noise. So one of the things that they told us at the meeting down, when BIA made the presentation, would not affect our noise and all that. Obviously, that was wrong. The second thing was, is we have a piece of property up on our cul-de-sac that is for sale. And the people are really pushing it right now. The other day, I was out working in my lawn, and somebody was down looking at that property. When they drove back up, they asked me about it. And I said, yeah, it's a very nice piece of property. Did they tell you about the trucks? And they said, what trucks? And I said, you see that dirt road out there? The possibility between 150 to 250 trucks a day. They said, thank you, we're no longer interested. So their comment that it would not affect property values was obviously bogus. It's going to. If they're going to sell it properly, they're going to have to drop the price considerably. The other thing is, is that BIA has proven that they could care less what impact it's going to have on us. There's been several people making comments about dangerous materials out there. The BIA, when they did core samples on the actual mine property, they only did four. For I don't know how many acres, only drew four. Well, their comments are, if there is a carcinogen or some other element out there that could cause great health problems, they don't care. They're going to put this road through, and they're going to put the mine through no matter what. It's going to be up to the county to stop them. The other thing is, one of the items I saw on paper was on your new court building. They made reference to it being a temple of justice. I hardly think in this day and age, the way the judicial system is working, that you want to call it a temple. It is anything but. Let's hope that our courts are much better than the federal courts. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Erin Miller. I am a resident in Douglas County. I have three kids that attend the lake schools. I'll be speaking on item four and five later. But I do want to touch base on an incident that occurred last week. Friday afternoon, I walked down to Nevada Beach with two of my kids and my dog as normal, and I was turned away from Nevada Beach. I was told by a park host that Nevada Beach was closed. Upon further conversations with this gentleman, it was explained to me that Thursday night, a fight broke out at Nevada Beach. A 17-year-old girl was lost at 9:30 at night, found two hours later, drunk, passed out underneath a picnic bench. Friday afternoon, I guess, a group of high school students, not from Douglas, not from Watau, not from South Tahoe, were at Zephyr Cove. That caused the park and the beach to be closed at Zephyr Cove. This group moved to Round Hill Pines, which caused Round Hill Pines to close, and then eventually made their way to Nevada Beach, which closed Nevada Beach. Our local residents, this is our backyard, we take walks down there very often throughout the day or in the evening, just to check sunset or just to relax before the big weekends come with a lot of tourists. It's very interesting that never once did I hear anything about any kind of closure for any of the three beaches, especially the one that's right across from my kid's school, that one of my kids can actually see the lake from her classroom. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of these incidents that are starting to happen already up at the lake and at our beaches. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robin Espejua, and I am a.
Please turn on your microphone. It is?
Lean into the microphone. Okay. Thank you. My name is Robin Espejua, and I am a resident over in Stotica Estates in Gardnerville. And we have got a problem that needs to be addressed in our neighborhood. It's a small community. It's become a shortcut for people not wanting to go through town because of the construction on 395. And we have a speed limit of 15 miles an hour. The average speed limit right now going through our community is right around 35. Even the, the school bus goes 35 miles an hour. The dump trucks go 35 miles an hour, and even people who deliver mail go through very fast. Since the construction has started, we have had many people have been, come into their neighborhood, come into the neighborhood, pull into the driveway, and get honked at because they're not moving fast enough moving it, going into their driveway, passing other cars that are going the speed limit. The other day, I almost got hit in the crosswalk by somebody cutting the corner, going very fast. I would like to see if we could get some speed bumps put in, even if it's temporary until they get finished with the, the construction zone going through on 395, just to slow the traffic down or a detour some other, some other way. If they were to finish Mueller Road, there's about a 40, 40 yards that they could put some gravel in and get that traffic over to Tolder, where they're originally trying to get to pass through over on East Valley. But it's become a problem, and the community has become dangerous. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lori Saint Germain. I own a property at 3524 Silverado Drive in, it's classified as Carson City, but it's actually in Douglas County. And my first request from this podium is that I be put on the June 20th agenda. And I also would like to disclose that I have discussed this very briefly with Mrs. Hales. This was probably at least a month or two ago, very briefly. And I decided to come here to present this first, before hopefully getting on the agenda to go into complete the situation. This goes back unfortunately a long time. This commission or the parties that were here back in 93 approved a development agreement with Indian Hills GID and with John Surpa, who apparently is a large developer in this area. And at that time, the parcel that I ultimately purchased, the only item on that parcel was a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand gallon water tank, not dollars, a tank. And that was the only item on the .79 of an acre that I ultimately purchased. Then in June, June the 2nd of 94, was the first subdivision recording. And that subdivision recording, all the way through phase five of that same subdivision designated my parcel, .79 of an acre, as an easement for utilities in total. There was not to be a house on that parcel at all. Then on April the 13th of 95, now let me regress there. All the things that I have read about water, and I know having water issues in Nevada is quite a noted, noted thing here to get water to when you're developing. The water category seemed to be quite problematic all the way up until the end of the development. So I think there were many questions that weren't resolved before the development even started. So on April the 13th of 95, a permit was taken out for three things. A booster station, a 550 square feet, a chain-linked fence, and a 2 million gallon water tank, of which I have the plans. And they were, that tank was to be put on the location exactly where my house stands today. That permit was then, in August 24th of 95, Sierra Pacific Power, who was apparently the power company at that point, took, made, made an easement agreement with John Surpa, and they also said that they wanted that entire parcel to be for utilities.
I'm sorry, but you have exceeded your three-minute limit. Thank you.
Can you turn the clock so we can see it? Thank you.
Jim Slade. I'm sure that you would all agree that details matter when it comes to public meetings, that words matter, that procedures matter. It's not only important for the board, but also for the public. Even more importantly, it's vital to the public record. It's up to you, the board, along with the deputy DA, to make sure that those standards are upheld. In nearly every board meeting after public comment, the first three items are the same. They're straightforward, easily managed, almost pro forma. Approval of the agenda, approval of the previous minutes, and the consent calendar. Let's look at how those items were actually handled at your May 16th meeting three weeks ago. Regarding approval of the agenda, there was no discussion, so the chair asked for, quote, "all those in favor of approval of the agenda for the, for our last meeting." What? The last meeting? That makes no sense. No one bothered to correct him. After the vote, the chairman then said, quote, "Next, we have approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?" What? That was the previous item. The vice chairman leaned over and said, "minutes." The chair replied, "Am I stepping on myself again?" Yes, you were. After the vote, the chairman failed to indicate the outcome of the vote, which is important, particularly for the record. Then came the consent calendar. After one item was pulled and a motion was made and seconded to approve the rest of the consent calendar, the chairman asked, "all those in favor of approval of the minutes?" What? The minutes? The item was the consent calendar. Again, no one corrected him, and again, the chair didn't state the outcome of the vote for the record. The board then took up, they pulled item L, and the chair asked Kathy Lewis to address the item. Deputy DA Ritchie had to remind the chair that he needed to read the item into the record first. Following Ms. Lewis's presentation, after a long pause, Mr. Noah's had made a motion to approve the item, but Commissioner Gardner reminded the chair that he had to take public comment on this item first. Following public comment, the chair started to ask for the vote, but was reminded by Mr. Cartanian that he had not asked the board if they had any further comments. that he had not asked the board if they had any further comments. After those comments were made, Mr. Noah had made a motion for approval. The chair then called for the vote, only to be reminded that there was no second to the motion. The chair responded, quote, "I thought it had been seconded. Obviously not," unquote. Look, everyone makes a little mistake every once in a while. But by my count, that was about ten mistakes on what should have been the easiest part of the agenda, all within six minutes of each other. Five of them were pointed out by other commissioners of the deputy DI. The others were not mentioned. This should be an embarrassment to the board and to the county. Apparently, Mr. Rice is not up to the task of being chairman. Despite being in his tenth year on the board, he should resign or be replaced as chairman.
Are there any further public comment? Saying none, Commissioner Hales would like to respond to one of the comments.
Thank you. Listed on the agenda is, there's public comment, and after that is response to public comment. So I actually have some responses from, to more than one of the public comments. I wanted to mention to Mr. Jackson that I was at that meeting too. Yeah. When Commissioner Gardner caught up to speak, I slipped out. There is an open meeting law concern if we're there. I know Commissioner Tarkanian spoke, and I'm like, okay, I think this is okay. But then I got concerned, so I slipped out. But I, I, I am concerned, and I was there. Sorry. It's good. I just wanted you to know. Ms. Saint Germain, I, I know you didn't, you weren't able to tell all of your story, and it looks like we're not listening, but we are listening. And I, I have your number at home, and I'll call to follow up. Yeah. We just have this three-minute time limit because we can get all sideways if we don't have some constraints. Yeah. And I, I just want to say a word in support of our chairman. It's, it's much harder to run meetings than it looks, and it's easy to get sideways on things. And I'm grateful that we are able to support each other. Sometimes we all get, get, use the wrong words and whatever, and I appreciate when I'm corrected. And I think we got through it, and we will continue to get through it. And these are not matters of substance. They're, and, and I support our chairman. And I wanted to, in response to your comments, say that I hope people look at my public service with some compassion and some leeway. And I would hope that we would all give that same grace to all the commissioners and really anyone who is doing their best to serve the public. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I would remind that we have three minutes open or for closing comments. So, Mr. Van, you can use that three minutes to finish what you were talking about.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Noah Sad and Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. I too knew that Commissioner Hales had attended that meeting, so I, I wanted to, I wrote that down as a, a comment to make to, to make sure that the record was straight on which commissioners were in attendance at that. In addition to that, words matter. Words do matter. And it was indicated, Mr. Slade, you indicated that Commissioner Rice has been on this board for ten-plus years, and that is not correct. He is in the middle of, actually, he's a year and a half into his second term, which would make it five and a half years, not ten-plus years. So just wanted to make that correction so that we make sure we get that into the minutes correctly. Okay? Other than that, I too, serving two years as chair, occasionally made a misstep and had to be corrected by commissioners. So it's, it's as Commissioner Hales is indicating, it's, it's not always a, an easy task when you're trying to run a meeting and pay attention to what is before you in, in regards to activities. Sometimes we miss over, over, miss things. So anyways, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Tarkanian. I have a joke. I probably shouldn't say it. Never mind. Okay. Moving right along. I think at this point it's appropriate to ask for approval of the agenda. Is there any corrections to the agenda? Saying none, I need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
All in favor, say aye. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Now we need the approval of the previous minutes, and I believe that there's one correction.
So, Mr. Chair, I have some corrections to the May second meeting. So before I make a motion to adopt the previous minutes, I'll, I'll make that correction. On May second of the minutes, I made the motion and I failed to articulate the entire motion so that the, it was in the records properly. So at this time, I would like to amend the minutes of the May second meeting, which was to adopt ordinance twenty-two-four dash one-six-three-six as presented, subject to the conditions set forth in Exhibit A to the staff report based upon the applicant's ability to make the required findings, the recommendation of both the Planning Commission and the Town of Gardnerville Advisory Board, public comment, and the discussion of the county commissioners, and approve the associated free tentative subdivision maps, DP twenty-three dash oh-oh-five-oh, DP twenty-three dash oh-oh-five-one, and DP twenty-four dash oh-oh-one-four, subject to the conditions set forth in Exhibit A to the staff report based upon the applicant's ability to make required findings with the recommendation of both the Planning Commission and the Town of Gardnerville Advisory Board, public comment, and the discussion of county commissioners. With that, I would move for the approval of the April thirtieth, thirty of twenty-two four special meeting and the May second, twenty-two four regular meeting as amended.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other corrections to the minutes? Saying none, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to the consent calendar. We have items A through B as in Victor. Does any commissioner wish to pull any item from consent? Saying none, I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We move to the administrative agenda. And item number one is for presentation only, as is number two. The ceremonial presentation of proclamation two-zero-two-four Paul dash zero-six-three, proclaiming June the sixth, twenty-two four as National Maloxone Awareness Day in Douglas County, Nevada. And I'll be presenting that, and I'll meet you at the diets. They throwing bottles already?
I am.
Okay. Hi. Welcome, sir. How are you?
Thank you.
All right, this is a proclamation. As I said, twenty-two-four Paul dash zero-six-three, supporting the designation of June sixth as National, and I knew that I would want to miss, missed, that's a hard word. Malox, maloxone, maloxone. Whatever it is, I don't want it.
You're gonna say it a lot.
I know. Whereas the opioid epidemic continues to devastate communities across the United States, leading to a significant loss of life and widespread social impact. Whereas since twenty-nineteen, local agencies such as Partnership Douglas County have provided over two thousand lifesaving doses of maloxone and trained over five hundred professionals and community members in how to administer maloxone. I said it right. Whereas maloxone is a safe and effective medication that can reverse opioid overdoses and save lives when administered properly by rapidly reversing the effects of opioid, opioids. Whereas maloxone plays a vital role in preventing long-term brain damage and reducing the risk of fatality associated with opioid overdoses. Whereas increased access to maloxone can ensure that individuals struggling with opioid use disorder have a chance at recovery in a future free from the grip of substance abuse disorder. Whereas it is imperative to educate individuals, families, healthcare professionals, and first responders about, one, the benefits of maloxone, including the potential maloxone has to reduce opioid-related fatalities, and, two, how to administer maloxone. Whereas, we're almost out of whereas's. The Recognized, Nor Recognizing National Maloxone Awareness Day will contribute to the ongoing efforts to educate the public, reduce stigma associated with substance use disorder, and promote access to lifesaving maloxone. Now, therefore be it that Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, number one, supports the designation of National Maloxone Awareness Day. Two, recognizes the lifesaving benefits of maloxone in reversing opioid overdoses and preventing unnecessary deaths. Three, acknowledges that increased access to maloxone empowers individuals, families, healthcare professionals, and first responders to intervene in emergency situations and provide immediate decisions to those experiencing an opioid overdose. And, number four, recognizes that National Maloxone Awareness Day serves as an opportunity to educate members of the public about the importance of recognizing the signs of opioid overdose and equipping themselves with maloxone to save lives. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, along with the Douglas County staff and residents, that June sixth is National Maloxone Awareness Day in Douglas County, adopted this sixth day of June, twenty-two four, by the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you so much. Would you like to talk?
Thank you. And for the record, my name is Daria Singer, and I'm the Director of Partnership Douglas County. And with me I have Under Sheriff Elgus and Ms. Carson City Cassandra Butterfield Tapia, representing some of our local partners that we work with to do naloxone education, awareness, and training. And I just want to say thank you to the board and to you all here in Douglas County for supporting these efforts and continuing to empower individuals to get the help that they need and to be prepared and save a life by using naloxone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two on the agenda for presentation only. Ceremonial presentation of proclamation two-zero-two-four Paul dash zero-six-two, proclaiming the week of June seventeenth, twenty-two four, through June twenty-third, twenty-two four, as National Pollinator Week. And I'm not going to make any jokes.
You wouldn't be the only one.
It's too early in the day for puns. Okay. Douglas County Board of Commissioners proclamation twenty-two-four P dash zero-six-two, proclaiming June seventeenth, twenty-twenty, through twenty-twenty. June seventeenth through twenty-three, twenty-two four, as National Pollinator Week. Where, there we go with the whereas's again. Whereas Douglas County has an abundance of plant and animal species that enhance the natural beauty of Douglas County and contribute to the health of our ecosystems and our industries. Whereas pollinator species such as bees, birds, butterflies, bats, beetles, and others provide substantial benefit that are vital for maintaining healthy flora and fauna, supporting wildlife, providing healthy watersheds and soils, and more. Whereas healthy pollinator populations are critical to the continued economic well-being of our agricultural producers of rural America and the US economy. And about one in every three bites of food exists because of the work of pollinators. Whereas pollinator populations have seen a steady decline since the nineteen-fifties, which may be due to factors such as disease, parasites, viruses, loss of habitat, exposure to pesticides, and lack of genetic diversity. Whereas the National Pollinator Week is critically important because it provides an opportunity to celebrate pollinators in our county, encourage the protection of pollinators, increase the quality and amount of pollinator habitat and forage, reverse pollinator losses, and help restore pollinator populations to healthy levels to ensure healthy ecosystems and food security. Therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to recognize the vital significance of protecting pollinator health and do hereby proclaim June seventeenth through twenty, the twenty-third, twenty-two four, as National Pollinator Week in Douglas County, adopted this sixth day of June, twenty-two four, by the Board of County Commissioners. And thank you for what you do. Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Thank you, Lindsay Chichester for the record. I would just encourage you, if you are thinking about supporting pollinators in your own habitat, we have a great display that Jessica Gardner and our master gardeners have put in front of our office. So we're on thirteen-twenty-five Waterloo Lane across from Lampy Park. Lots of great things are blooming, lots of pollinators are visiting it. And also, your pollinators also need water, so put out a source of water for them. If you have any questions about how to establish a pollinator habitat, Jessica and the master gardeners can help with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something, or are you gonna let her do all the talking for you?
I'll give it next year.
Okay. Okay. Okay, if we can corral the commissioners again. I just got a thumbs up from technical, so we try to get this wrote on the show again. All right, everybody in their places with bright, no, I'm not doing that. Anyway, we're back on the record. And next item is item number three. Possible action discussion and presentation from the University of Nevada Reno, UNR, regarding the Douglas County Extension Program and the Budget for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Lindsay Chichester.
All right, am I live? There we go. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us this morning. My name is Lindsay Chichester. I am transitioning out of my role as the Extension Educator here in Douglas County as I've accepted a position with the Nevada State 4H Leader. So I'll be leading our youth program in 4H across the state. So I'm excited about that, but obviously want to make sure that Douglas County is in a position to keep doing well from the extension front. And that's what we'll talk about today and share some of the stuff that we've been doing and talk about our proposed budget for this upcoming year. Real quick, with me is Holly Gatski. She is our Northern Area Director, and she can help answer any questions that might come up as well. So just as a reminder, Extension across the country is a partnership between federal, state, and county, local. So federally, it's a partnership with the USDA NIFA, and then it trickles down to the states and then, of course, county support as well. So the Smith Lever Act was passed in 1914, so we're, we are 100 years old, over 100 years old. And we provide extension work throughout the country, in our states, in our counties and communities, and just bringing research that happens at the land-grant universities back to the community, to the citizens that need help on different topics. So in Nevada, our revised statutes kind of determine the six areas that we provide programming and expertise in. So that's natural resources, horticulture, agriculture, health, community and economic development, and youth and family development. So those are, if you ever hear us refer to our six NRS areas of work, that's how we define those, and that's kind of where we hire positions and focus our efforts through Extension or through those six areas. So what does this look like in Douglas County? So this is just kind of how we're staffed currently. I was the Extension Educator, the Program Director for our county here. Under me, Jessica Gardner, who was here earlier, runs our Horticulture Outreach Program, works with all the Master Gardeners and provides support in all things horticulture. Tara Ann Sodigie runs our 4H and Youth Development Program here. So she works with all of our youth between the ages of five and 19 within the county. Patricia Shilly is our Administrative Assistant, so she keeps everything running behind the scenes. Karen Beatty helps support her with some office support on different things. And then we also have two other people that will provide support as needed to different programs. Mary Martin helps with our beekeeping program. She's also one of Jessica's Master Gardener volunteers. And then she does provide temp support to the office if we all happen to be out and about in the community. And then Don L. Wolstein was hired on a Risk Management Agency grant to specifically help with our beekeeping program around the northern area that's been growing. So Don L. helped that, the Bee in Garden Conference that we held at this location in March. Don L. was largely responsible for that. So this is who's in the office and who provides support to the Douglas County Extension Office. So I just wanted to drill down a little bit. You may be familiar with some of the programs we do and have done. But in case you're not, just to remind you what those look like. So Eagles and Ag, we collaborate with the Carson Valley Chamber and help, I help specifically with reaching out to the ranches for the ranch tours and then just bits and pieces here and there. But it's definitely having access to some of our most historic ranches in the valley is a nice opportunity to talk about what that looks like in agriculture, the heritage of it. Cattlemen's Update is one that's been going for 50-plus years around the state. And in COVID, we added one day of virtual option, and then we do four to five in-person options around northern Nevada. So we've hosted here in Douglas County, and then we've also provided content expertise as speakers on that tour. One that's a lot of fun for our team and me is the Beginning Farmer and Rancher and the Farm to Fork Programs. So we meet with all the participants who want to be in agriculture and just never had a reason to get involved until now. And they start with us and go through a business plan. There's some financial learning that they go through and just different things. So they have eight virtual sessions where they learn about finances, business plans, budgeting, agriculture, the animal sciences, horticulture. And then our capstone is we kick it off on a two-day tour. So this year, one day focused in Reno and Carson City, and then the second day we hosted down here in Douglas County. And then they submit their business plan to our group of instructors, and we give them a certificate of completion that they can then take to their lenders and hopefully make their dream a reality. And then Small Farm Conference, this was actually hosted in Fallon this year, but they're gonna rotate it around the area. And this is for anyone who's working small farm agriculture. Some of the nuances that are a little bit different than bigger, larger production ag. And then obviously, because of our Pollinator Proclamation, we've got a lot of interest in beekeeping programs and classes. We have a community bee and pollinator club that meets once a month. There's probably about 35 families signed up now. We're also in the middle of doing a 4HB Club right now, so working with our youth. And then one program that's pretty new, but it's kicking off, that could be a lot of opportunity for people in the Douglas County and surrounding areas is the Food Business Center. So this will help anyone that's, you know, makes maybe the best homemade marinade that exists, and now you want to scale it up to the next level. How do you do that? So this project will help people be able to take something small and really ramp up those efforts. Horticulture, as I mentioned, Jessica runs our Master Gardener Program here, which is thriving and growing like crazy. They do a seed swap every January, which is wildly popular. There's also a plant swap that occurs, so lots of great things happening locally with native plants. They have a big outreach at the Heritage Park Garden and also at the Dengberg Home Ranch Historic Park. And then Jessica and the Master Gardeners have the Pollinator Demo Garden that I mentioned was in front of our office. And that was made possible actually through one of the county grants that Jessica obtained to provide the signage, the plants. And then her and the Master Gardeners did numerous outreach events on all things pollinator plants and native plants. So come by and check it out. It's actually, lots of things are blooming now. It's very pretty. And then they just, Jessica and the Master Gardeners did a native plant sale out at River Fork Ranch with the Nature Conservancy, and just encouraging people to plant native things that don't require a lot of water in our system here in Nevada. So another really popular event. On the 4H Youth Development, Tara did quite a few summer day camps last year. So there was a different theme every week, and the youth would come and learn about everything from livestock to STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. To, they would make a whole bunch of messes, which is great for summer camps, to be messy and dirty and do things that your parents won't let you do at home, you can do at the Extension Office. And then, of course, in our own backyard, we have our 4H Camp at Lake Tahoe, which is a beautiful facility that we're lucky to have. And we really take advantage of trying to send, here's a fun fact, Douglas County has more kids going during our week of camp than we go up with Washoe, Carson Story, and Douglas is our county cohort of who we send kids to camp with. And Douglas County is sending more kids than the other counties, which I think is great that we've got so many kids that want to head to camp. And then also in 4H and Youth Development, we do annually in the fall an information night just to let people know what 4H is about, the clubs that we have, they can come and meet our volunteer leaders, meet our staff. And then at the end of the 4H year, we also do an awards night, which just celebrates all the accomplishments of our youth and the leaders. This year Tara took two of our senior 4Hers, so ages 14 to 19, to the American Farm Bureau Youth Leadership Conference. And so that was a great opportunity for our youth to go to that. Tara also hosted a You Gotta Believe Livestock Showmanship Clinic out at the Fairgrounds. And there were kids that came from, I think, five different states to attend that. So that was a real positive event that she hosted. Our Shooting Sports Program is very active and large here in Douglas County. And our leaders host trainings. We've had some teen leaders go through it as well so that the teens can also help lead that program. We just finished up the Nevada Junior Livestock Show, which is in Nevada, one of our biggest livestock shows held in Reno. And so Douglas County youth did very well there. And Tara took over leading the Nevada 4H Livestock Judging Contest this year. The person that normally does it was on maternity leave, so she took on those responsibilities as well. And then just some other fun things we do in the fall, we do a Fall Festival. Last year was our first one. This year we'll have our second annual. And that's always at the Dengberg Home Ranch, and we encourage you to come out. We've got everything from, we took it as literally a harvest theme. And we harvested honey, we harvested plants and flowers. Our mobile meat team was there, and they did a meat cutting demonstration. So lots of fun things around harvesting. The Bee in Garden Conference we hosted here in March. And then this past year, we held our first volunteer appreciation event. So as anyone who works with volunteers know that they're the backbone of what everybody who relies on them does. And so we just did an appreciation event for our 4H and Master Gardener and beekeeping volunteers, and just as a thank you to everything they do. Okay, some other programs, we can't do it all. I know it seems sometimes like it is all. But as I mentioned earlier, we've got the six NRS areas that we work within. And so there's some state programs and expertise that we tap into as well, and one of those is Radon. So Radon, we do a big promotion in January and February for that, where you can get a test for your home. It's the second-leading cause of lung cancer behind smoking, and it's just a gas that comes into your home through your floor. We have a Living with Fire team that we work with, and we've done some meetings down in TRE after some of our fires. And they're also working with some of our tribal partners here in Douglas County to talk about culturally, culturally important burning and what that means. And then we've got Economic Development Community Groups. So our NEET team did some economic development assessments that were provided. I believe last year was their big year on that, and they provided some information and updates to all of you. And then at the end of the day, you know, we have a huge space in our office that has a bunch of resources, guidance, and education to people who are facing daily problems, whether it's something you're growing, planting, or you want to raise. We help just point you in the right direction and get you those resources. So that kind of wraps up what Extension is and what we're doing. And part of our agreement, since we're a little bit different than some of the other partners within the county, our budget comes from the ad valorem and property taxes. So we try to be as transparent as possible in everything we do and make, you know, all of our outreach. So this is what we propose for this upcoming year, and this is what we've submitted. It's anticipated that our share of the property taxes will be over $400,000, and our estimated expenses, we've budgeted at over $388,000. And what that looks like is, so the staff that I introduced you to, this is their salaries, so $212,490. There's a couple longevity and retention calculated in that, so over $215,000 in salaries. And then this is fringe, so just over $82,000 in fringe. So like most departments, the bulk of where the investment goes is in our people. And that's why it's important for us to have good people doing great work on the ground. To break it down further, we probably have this broken down into more lines than anybody, anybody needs. But again, just how, you know, just running office business, telephone, communication, postage, fingerprinting is on there because of all of our volunteers. We do ask that they be fingerprinted and background checked because they deal, work with our youth, and the safety is important for us. Travel, we were able to finally get a Extension vehicle, so that will help our travel quite a bit. We hope. We weren't sure how to budget this year, since that is a new addition to us. But it is nice having an Extension vehicle that the county was able, we were able to purchase with some of our rollover funds as we, you know, need to attend events and meetings and haul horticulture and beekeeping equipment around. So there's, I don't know if you necessarily want me to go through all these. I know you have the presentation. I'm just trying to pick out any that are kind of oddities, office supplies, small equipment. We've got it budgeted right now that we replace one new computer in our office a year. So we're kind of on a five-year rotation with all of the equipment. 4H supplies, small projects. So all of those things comes to $90,635. And again, that's between salary and just some of our operating expenses. That $388,000 is where we budget our next fiscal year going. And this one always comes up. I mentioned earlier, our county, state, federal partnership. I think this is always important to talk about and share as well. Is my salary primarily is a state-funded salary. So the state provides my salary, and a small portion is paid by Douglas County, but the bulk of it is from the state. Once in a while, there's, some of the other staff will have a small portion of state, but it's not very common. And then what we receive here in Douglas County are the portion of the federal, the county contribution, and then grants. So I'm on the promotion and tenure track, and so writing grants is, of course, part of that process. So all of the grants that we do bring here to Douglas County, or some of my colleagues across the state that write grants also, anytime a grant impacts and benefits Douglas County, this is how it's factored in. So the cost, the return on investment is pretty significant, you know, with over half a million dollars that the contributions are bringing back to Douglas County. And then one final thing that I wanted to bring just awareness to is UNR provides operating and maintenance. So in 2324, we received just over $9,000 on this. And this goes to help us just maintain our building and office maintenance. So the building is provided by the county, but this helps us be able to provide utilities, cleaning, pest control, our storage unit, consumables. Anytime we need to make a repair, painting, anything like that, we can use some of this O and M money toward. So it just is the university's contribution to helping maintain the facility and our office. And recently, we have worked with Moss Adams and the Financial Department to put together an MOU. Because our budget process has been a little bit cumbersome in the past where we send stuff, we make an invoice, it has to go to the university for signature, it comes back here. And Moss Adams suggested that our annual budget would just go to the university to manage out of there. So as part of this MOU that's been approved, some of the things that I'm talking about today and that you'll see coming forward are just part of that agreement. And that's to provide an opportunity for the county to review and assist in our annual plan of work in working with our staff, the area director, such as Holly, and the director, so that would be Jake DeDecker potentially, to determine what that would look like for Douglas County throughout the year. For us to provide an annual budget to all of you, kind of like we're doing today. And then to provide an annual performance report on our strategic goals and initiatives defined based on all of the activities in the county. So we'll tie back into what's the strategic plan for the county and how what we're doing contributes to that as well. Okay, so staffing updates. What's changing, as I mentioned, I'm transitioning into the role of the 4H Program Leader position. And it was important in that process to ensure that my position be replaced here in Douglas County because there's been a long history of having someone with an agriculture expertise here. And what we thought would be a great fit is a farm and small acreage water specialist. And the reason that we kind of focused in on that is because some of the programs that we talked about really deal really deal with this, that beginning farmer rancher water is important to all those people trying to figure out, you know, if they're going to grow crops or raise animals, what that looks like. So, you know, there's already some existing programs in place that this expertise can support. With all of the A19s in Douglas County, that would be hugely beneficial as well to these people that, you know, just need to better understand their water and how it should move around their, their property. And then there's some curriculum that I just hadn't had a chance to ever update. But Sue Donaldson, one of our previous water specialists with the university retired and created a small acreage curriculum that's pretty robust. And just a great resource for people. And I would really hope that this position could help update that curriculum as we see a lot more small acreage owners move into the area. Also, some of my internal tasks will be kind of redistributed within the office to Patricia and Karen. And just to alleviate that so that this waters, farm and small acreage water specialist can focus more on the programmatic part of their position and less on some of the day-to-day responsibilities. What's not changing is just our continued high quality of programs delivered by the great staff we have, our excellent customer service and our continued partnerships with the county. So with that, we'll take any questions.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board? And we'll, we'll start at this end and Commissioner Hales.
Well, I appreciate your good work and it's good to see those slides with all the many good things that you accomplished in your office. And you, with this change, I know we've, we've talked about this change. And you, you know, this question's coming. I, I just would like to know. My understanding is that each county will have, rather than someone who is a little expert in a lot of things. The different counties are going to have experts in one thing and be, be experts in one thing and share that expertise with other counties statewide. Or Northern Nevada. And, and I guess, which in theory sounds good, but I want to make sure that our person, and I don't even know, what is your, the name of the title?
Of the person that will be hired?
Yeah, of the, or your title, your former title.
So my former title was Extension Educator. This will be a specialist.
This will be a specialist.
Mm-hmm. Which allows, which means that they can dig in a little bit deeper to some of the, so educators were more generalist, as you mentioned, you, you know, had to know a lot about a lot. And they will be able to hone in a little bit more and have a more specific skillset.
So we, we don't want to lose, we don't want to lose a person being here physically. And being able to provide the, I mean, I like what is not changing. I mean, I like that list, but I want to dig deeper and know how. How is that not going to change? And will our person actually be present in our county?
Yes. So, and all that Holly's, so the plan is that they will be hired to be based here in Douglas County. And they will have obviously a county commitment here, but then, so the way, I mean, obviously not every county can afford or nor has the space to have all of the expertise in one county. So there's an animal science specialist that will be hired in Churchill County. So as some of these expertises are happening in the area or the region, we'll be able to utilize that. And I hope that that cohort of people will work on building some programs as well. So they will be based here, housed here. I don't know. I mean, they could have some responsibility around the state, but as we all know, you know, the state is so diverse that what they would talk about and be applicable may not apply to Southern Nevada. It's probably more relevant to Northern. So I don't know if Holly wants to.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So it's always hard to get down to the details and explain the slight shift that's happening. But a lot of the great programs that Lindsay was talking about, she definitely did that in collaboration with other people across the state in, in many cases. So that, that collaboration is being enhanced and shifted a little on how it's done. Because we found that the extension educators, when you're trying to do that many hats, it's hard to do things well and you burn people out. And so that was my fear as, as somebody working with them. But yes, I mean, your exact question on this water person or this person with water expertise. What usually happens in just, I can't even think of a case when it hasn't happened, is that when we will locate it and we will post the position to be in Douglas County, the Douglas County Office, straight up, that's how it works. So the position will be here. And when they develop programming, they will be looking at the county's needs. And then how that reflects across the state. So usually what happens is they develop programming that works for the small acreages and the needs that are found here. There's a lot of watersheds here. There's a lot of good collaborators. So they would develop programming and then, once that programming's developed, it tends to sprinkle across and help other areas as well. And that will happen in the others, as Lindsay just said. We literally did interviews yesterday for a livestock specialist, which we haven't had for over 15 years. That person will be in Fallon, but I expect them to do the same thing in that they will develop programming, but that will spread across. And there are teams already set up that really do bring that education on the ground to different communities and rotate around and do those types of activities. So we're enhancing that side of things. It, it just means putting different titles and allowing people to drill down and be a more deeper expert in their area and give them time to do that while sharing that in different places. Does that help answer your question?
Could you get more specific? How many days will they be on the road a year? How many days will they be in Douglas? How many days will other specialists be in Douglas?
Of course, that's going to vary depending on the, the issues and such. But I would expect waters, you know, a specialist to be at least here 50, 60% of the time or more. Depending on how much activity is going on, and then they would be doing stuff in other places. Often specialists are more like 80% on the ground in, in a location. And then what you do is you do workshops and activities that go across. You may also just, we, we have our system set up that we do hybrid online classes a lot in some cases, or road shows where people rotate through. So some of the events that Lindsay mentioned, where you had activities for local people, those activities are bringing in experts from other areas. And those experts will be able to drill down into a higher level of expertise with this new system. And that's what we're looking for.
So I, I guess my desire is to make sure that the county's money being spent, which is the bulk of this. Right? Did I see that wrong?
It, no. When it comes to the experts that we have, the specialists, that is state and federal funding that pays for those salaries. And then, so county money is always only spent for the benefit of those county residents. That we're very tight and very clear on our accounting always on. And so the reality is all of Douglas money would be spent here. The position we're talking about is paid with state and federal money, which is partly why it's got to share across the state to some degree. But we do tend to strategically put those positions in areas of need. And so that's how we do that and, and make sure that we get things covered for different regions. So their operating money and will largely come from grants in most cases. And the salary is, is from federal and state.
But that person is still in charge, or am I wrong about that? Is this person still in charge of our cooperative extension program?
They'll, they'll definitely be a voice in the office, but we're also shifting some of those duties to other people in the office that are here all the time to ensure that happens.
So who supervises and evaluates the people in the office?
This position.
This position. Okay, so in that respect, the spending of the county money is under this specialist.
Yeah.
So, and the county spends a lot of money on this. So I, in my role, what I want to see is to make sure that we get our money's worth. So when you make this shift, I, I mean, it, I, I like the, I mean, the idea is fine, but in operation, are we gonna, I, I'm, I'm, I am not 100% comfortable that we're gonna, that we're set up to get as much as we get now or more. So perhaps what we could, because I know this isn't an action item. I mean, it is an action item, but there's no specific action called for. So, I mean, I, I, I guess I would like to see maybe in six months, a, either a written report or a short accounting of how the new system is working. And are we getting the same benefit and similar or better program? And what is our petition, participation rates and, and that sort of thing? I'd like to know.
And, and certainly we have no problem doing that. It's, it's a conversation and a communication. We want it to work. We are trying something new. So I'm going to be honest about that. So we will be monitoring closely. That is not a problem to come back and report and show how it's working, how it's not. Have a discussion and see how it is. I mean, that's why we're here to have a conversation. We fully respect and have the same goal of making sure that you get the bang for the buck. We know it's taxpayer money and, and our job is to bring the best research-based education to the residents of Douglas County. So we certainly have that goal too. So coming back and doing a reporting of how it's going, I think that's a wise move. And in fact, part of what we're intending to do anyhow. So that would be no problem at all.
Thank you. Commissioner Nozad, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I think Commissioner Hales encapsulated everything I would say.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarkanian is a nope. And Commissioner Gardner, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you. As I look at this, first of all, thank you for the presentation. And I guess my question revolves around timing. What is the, when is this, how is this going to roll out? Have we already, or are you already looking at a, and I like the idea of a farm and small acreage water specialist, especially here in Douglas County. We have so much farming and, and that takes place. So, so those, those are basically my questions. And then also, you know, we have a lot of people that already regulate a lot of water in Douglas County. Carson Water Subconservancy District and also the Water Conveyance Committee. So, and those folks already know pretty much how water flows in Douglas County. So, you know, you, it's almost to the point where it's hard to drink a bottle of water without them knowing about it, right? So, so just, just those observations. So how are they gonna, number one, what's the timing? Number two, well, you know, when are you looking at this person? And number three, how are we going to interface with those other entities?
Sure. So the timing is, I mean, this is the first step is bringing this to all of you and that we agree that this is a good place to move it forward. And then Holly will start working on a job description with our HR department and get that ready. And then it'll go through the university's system for all the approvals. And then it'll be posted and it's got to be posted for a month at least. And then we'll, during, when it's posted, we put out national, posted everywhere we can that makes sense, you know, within trying to find that demographic we're looking for. So it could be, I don't know, three months, maybe, that it will take to get this going. Keep in mind, there's going to be other programs that are happening too. So it's not like programming is just ceasing to exist. And then to your comment about the other agencies, you know, the, by no means do I think either of us ever anticipate this person will have any regulatory duty. It'll be working in partnership and collaboration with those to deliver education. So, you know, what are good water management practices? What are good methods for irrigation and water distribution? It'll be more of those type of things is what I anticipate. Obviously that could be different once they get here. And then they might decide to do a needs assessment as well. I did one when I started as well. And it's probably time for an update too, just to really pinpoint the accuracy of topics that they want to focus in on and what's important to the citizens of Douglas County. And then, let's see, there was one more. What am I forgetting? Did I answer them all?
Yes. No interfacing with the other, interfacing with the other agencies.
Yeah. And I hope that they, you know, like currently I was on the education board with the Water Conservancy, working with Brenda and, and all of them, you know, I think they can, there's definitely lots of opportunities to engage with the local agencies where it's appropriate and provide the education and outreach and expertise that we can bring.
Well, I certainly want to express my feelings of loss, you know, that you, you're not going to be in our disposition again. How difficult do you find, have you, have you researched or how do you anticipate a difficulty in finding this water specialist, I suppose?
Maybe. So, so, well, what is always interesting to me, I have been asked to be on numerous committees over the year, trying to find staff and positions. And some of them we get filled quickly because there's a ton of interest and some of them it takes longer. And it's always the surprise to me on which ones are hit and miss for people. But other states and universities have similar type positions to this. So I'm hoping that we can really drill into those and look for people who are, you know, trying to do or are doing something similar and get someone down here. And if anybody in the crowd or listening knows of someone who fits this, we're always willing to take, you know, those people to and send them in that direction. So that's how we find a lot of great hires is people we already know.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right, this is for possible action. So if there's no further comments from the board, we'll open this to public comment. Saying nobody rushing to the microphone. Okay, the recommended motion is to provide direction to staff in the Douglas County Extension Program in discussion of the budget for fiscal year 2024-25. And I think we pretty well covered that. Is there, is there, Mr. District Attorney? Do we have a need for a, a specific motion?
This is AJ Haynes from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office for the record. No, no motion is required. If you wanted to provide some kind of guidance, you could do that now. But you can also take no action.
I think we've probably given some pretty good direction. Commissioner Hales.
Well, I, I, I would move that we approve the, not that it needs our approval, we support. I move that we support the budget presented and request that a report be brought to us six months after the new specialist starts with details about the, the services and programs that Douglas County is getting.
If that's a motion, do we have a second? Any further discussion by the board? Since we already opened it for public discussion, we'll bring it back to the board and all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Right.
Thank you for your presentation.
Sure. Thank you. And thank you for your continued support.
And welcome.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
I, I would also indicate that in item, as part of our MOU, item F, it says to provide an annual budget and not less than quarterly reports of expenditures of county funds to Douglas County. So do you want to maybe revise our motions?
That reports of expenditures is a little different than what I had in mind, which was more, I want to keep a finger on what are the programs that we're getting and the services we're getting.
Then I suppose our, our previous motion covers the MOU. So, okay.
Yep. Lindsay Chichester, yes, we will ensure that all of the budgetary and financial reporting is completed as per the MOU guidelines.
Is the board satisfied? I see some nodding of heads. Okay. And good luck to your pollinators.
Thank you.
All right. We've had so many breaks already. Shall we power through? Okay. Item number four for possible. Item number four for possible action, discussion to approve the Parks and Recreation 2024 Program and Facilities Manual, which adds number one, parking fees on Warrior Way. Two, fees for the reservation of pickleball courts. Well, that'll be fun. And three, corrects minor typographical errors. And Brooke, I'm not going to even try. It's all yours, Brooke.
Okay, thank you. Brooke Adie, I am the Director for our Community Services Department, and I am here to talk about our Fees and Charges Manual. Although we are requesting updates to the fees, this is a piece of a larger project that we've been working on. And that is to address parking up at Warrior Way and access to the Zephyr Cove Beach based on some events that have happened last year. So I'm going to give a little bit of history on where we have come and where we are today. So during this current fiscal year, there were funds that were allocated through the budget process as part of the capital improvement projects to allocate $50,000 to do a parking feasibility study up at Warrior Way. We have selected a vendor to start that process. We're going to have our kickoff meeting, I think it's next week, to start looking at parking feasibility, which we'll look at a variety of things. That will look at compliance, that will look at collecting fees, that will look at parking inventory. There's, there's a lot that is going to come into this. And we're working with an organization that has a lot of experience of doing similar projects up at the basin. So I think we're going to get some really good information. Where we are right now is there is an immediate need to address parking up at Warrior Way, which has caused us to come together and, and bring all of these pieces together to address parking immediately. This is going to be a pilot parking program, which I think is really going to help with the feasibility study to gather information on who is accessing parking, how much revenue is anticipated to be collected, and what parts of this program are working and not working. We're, we're having discussions on compliance. We're looking at a QR code to, to scan or a text option for collecting fees. So, so as part of this whole process, our first step was to authorize the Douglas County Community Services Department to be able to collect fees and set those fees. So I'm going to, I'm going to go over that. Do you want to have more?
Thank you. Finish out.
Okay. Okay. So I, I'm going to start with looking at the, our manual. So the Programs and Facilities Manual is one of the most important documents within the Community Services Department. This outlines all of the reservations and fees and policies for all of our facilities, both in our community centers and out at our parks. So this document is reviewed on an annual basis through our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We discuss potential changes. We bring before the Board of County Commissioners for final approval. This ask is outside of our normal schedule because we want to be able to implement a paid parking program and, and have the authority to collect fees. So. The first change happens on page 513 of your packet. And on 513, it outlines fees that will be collected through the Parks and Recreation Advisor, sorry, the Community Services Department through an app. It establishes Douglas County resident fee, which is $0. So the idea is that Douglas County residents who wish to park up at Warrior Way will not have to pay a fee. Library cardholders, tennis club members, school or scheduled use events, park or school use reservation, and then also special events by the, through the district or county will also be charged $0. So they will not be charged to park up in these facilities. We have also established three different rates. We have a, a non-resident weekend fee, a non-resident weekday fee, and a holiday high demand fee. Parking will be collected seven days a week when the school district is not in session. And then in August, when school goes in session, the fees will be collected on the weekends only. Another thing to point out within the manual is that the director has been given, we're requesting that the director has the authority to adjust rates and rules based on usage and needs. These actions will be temporarily, temporary until recommendations can be attained by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and then brought before this board. No parking will be allowed in fire lanes or posted areas, and no beach parking will be allowed in front of the Zephyr Cove Tennis Courts and the Douglas County Library. We are also making sure that no fires or barbecues of any kind will be allowed for beachgoers, and they are not allowed to go near or enter school athletic buildings. As part of this program, we have installed sandy huts and garbage cans to help with waste and to help manage the amount of people that are going to be up there. I'm going to pass it over to Scott because I know he's got more to say on this.
Thank you, Director Adie. Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager for Douglas County. I, I wanted to elaborate just a little bit on what has brought this about, what has brought this about really quickly. Brooke has referenced the, the fact that we have a feasibility report in good old government Douglas County fashion of slow, methodical analyze thing publicly that here involve collaborate, cooperate with all kinds of folks down the road. That's what this feasibility is, is preparing. And as we initiated that funding request and received approval and started implementing that, I, I think the snowball started rolling. And it started rolling after the last Fourth of July in Tahoe with the headlines in the paper coming out of the COVID pandemic and an epic response to tourism in the Tahoe Basin through stay station vacations. We saw a real influx of visitors coming into Tahoe and beach use during the summer really accelerated. We'll be honest, there's always been a parking issue on Highway 50 and Highway 28 in Washoe County and Carson City and those particular organizations where we were experiencing, starting back in 2000, people parking on those roads with completely indifference to getting a ticket. It just became part of their financial plan and their vacation budget. And we saw that really intensify last year after we already had this funding, put this plan in place because we saw something coming down the road. There was a signalized intersection happening on Warrior Way. There's a map there, which is a private road. I want to reference that Warrior Way is not a public road or drive. It is Douglas County's Zephyr Cove Park property with an access easement for the Douglas County School District and utilities. And so we are talking about private property owned by Douglas County and private property owned by the Douglas County School District that we are referencing in particular regarding this. With the inclusion of the signalized intersection on Warrior Way, NDOT had announced that they're going to post no parking on Highway 50 and possibly reduce up to 200 to 250 additional cars that have been impacting the beach in previous years that were allowed to park parallel on Highway 50. After last Fourth of July and the headlines, loving Tahoe to death, the negative press that we received on tourism, the amount of trash and debris that was left over on our beaches after the holiday weekends, we saw a real ground swell of interest from the Tahoe Basin, but particularly Douglas County residents in the basin. And we started sensing that the snowball is coming. And if we don't get ahead of it, we are going to get rolled over by it. And Douglas County is contributory to some of the issues in the Tahoe Basin when it's particularly pointing at Zephyr Cove Beach. The property you're looking at between Zephyr Cove Park and the two high school facilities in Warrior Way can park and hold a capacity of 800 or more cars in that area. And on the Fourth of July last year, that parking facility probably put an additional 3,000 to 4,000 people on that beach. And if you've ever seen the YouTube videos or heard reports regarding that, it, it was not a great user experience for those that attended, unless you're college-aged and really like being shoulder to shoulder with people. It was not a great experience and it certainly was not a great environment for our environment. You can imagine there were probably at least 10,000 people on that beach on that weekend with minimal sanitation facilities, porta potties, trash cans in the area. And frankly, the beach got trashed in more than one way. There were also some issues that prompted what was called light speed response by the U.S. Forest Service. A portion of the property that you're looking at at Zephyr Cove Beach is operated by a concessionaire called Aramart. And they operate the Tahoe portion as you go into South Lake Tahoe or State Line portion where it is improved beach. The other portion was unmanaged, other than by the U.S. Forest Service, that had limited resources. And they refer to that area as either Dog Beach, Zephyr Shoals, or the Dreyfus Estate, which was purchased by the U.S. Forest Service back 25 years ago. That was unmanaged this year. Aramart is under contract to manage the entire property all the way over to Skyland subdivision. And they have limited improvements there, but they are preparing to manage that this year in cooperation with the U.S. Forest Service. So there have been a number of changes. And so we sat down, took a real hard look at it from the administrative level. And we said, we really want to do something this year. And we're going to fly by the seat of our pants to the greatest extent that we can to manage this with the main goal of reducing capacity, improving sanitation, and improving visitor experience. So the pricing that you're looking at today has a lot to do with reducing capacity. And that's why this action gives great deference to the Department Director to modify fees because we are really trying to regulate the number of cars around 300. We're getting over 500. We think we're going to be hitting a tipping point by where affecting the experience on the beach and hitting capacity on the beach. So that's why this model is really coming forward so that we have the opportunity to respond. If we charge $100 on the Fourth of July and we put 800 cars on there, the next day you're going to see a $200 rate. We have that ability to shift on the fly to get that number down to manageable. We also, we, and we understand that's a lot of money. But it's a $305 ticket to park on Highway 50, and they will do it. They will do it until it's full and they'll take that ticket. And so that is also part of their vacation budget. So we are, we are planning on having the ability to shift that, that pricing to try to reduce capacity by pricing as best we can. Also want to point out that very long list of exemptions. If you're a beachgoer and you're a Douglas County resident, you want to venture out on the Fourth of July, and I'm a local up there and Wes is too, and I've never went to the beach on the Fourth of July. Maybe drove down to watch a fireworks show, but I've never spent the day on the beach. We'd be out of our mind to do so. But if you want to, and you're a Douglas County resident, you want to use your park and park property, Douglas County is not going to charge you to use your parking facilities to access the beach. But if you are not a Douglas County resident, and you're not using the library or not using the park, you are expected to pay. And we are still sorting out the pieces to get that compliance on there. We have also through this process really reached out in, in real quick fashion to, to talk to Aramart, to let them know what we're doing, to talk to the U.S. Forest Service, to let them know what we're doing. We've met with Douglas County Sheriff's Department for enforcement, the Nevada Highway Patrol for enforcement. We have met extensively and importantly with the Douglas County School District, not just the administration and the school board, to let them know that this is coming. But we have met with the site administrators who have their own host of concerns and really want us to get ahead of this problem. And we have met with our nonprofits who have for years. I'm a 31-year-plus resident. My kids went to school. They have participated in the fundraisings of charging for parking as either a booster club or a parents' club program to raise money. And so they were one of the first groups that we reached out to say, hey, big bad Douglas County, the government's coming. We're here to help. We're going to start charging for parking. And you can imagine, wait a minute, we have been the ones that have charged for parking as an essential part of our fundraising program to support our schools at the lake for more than 31 years, Mr. Morgan. And we really, it's vital to the success of our schools, to our, our programs. And so we have been hypersensitive to include them in this process. When we went to the school board and first did the feasibility, we started top, worked our way down with this approach for this one-year temporary agreement that you're going to talk about at your next agenda item. And setting these fees in place, we worked bottom up. We started with the nonprofits. We went to the school administrators. We went to the school. We went to the other parties and property owners surrounding us and have come up with this. And it's probably appropriate to talk about it now because we are talking about money where we have included the nonprofits as part of our solution, a really important part of our solution. And so they are part of the revenue share out of the dollars generated from the fees you're setting today will be distributed on a 20% with the first $30,000 going to the nonprofits. The, as administered through the Zephyr Cove Parents Club, who will then distribute money to the, what Georgia Whittell Boosters Club based on the amount of volunteer hours. We need them, we need them very badly to be ambassadors in the park, to help park cars, to answer questions, to help people pay their fees, to help pick up trash, to guide people while they're going to be using during those very intensive use weekends. And so they are a huge part of the solution to, to guiding this. They're also our local residents. They're ambassadors at the lake. And we wanted to include them very, very badly in the potential solutions that we have going forward. The other portion of the dollars that we're going to be assessing after net proceeds will go 40% to the school district, 40% to Douglas County. And Commissioner Tarkanian?
Before you got off on, I just wanted to ask you, did I hear you say up to 30,000? And then after 30,000, is what it's going to be a 50-50 split?
No, then it's 20. They get the first 30 of the first dollar we collect or the first $30,000 we collect. We want to make those nonprofits whole. They average around that on their fundraising activities in previous years. They have even been as successful to have $50,000, $60,000 fundraising year. So the first 30 goes to them. Then after that, up to 20% will go to them. And then 40% to the school district, 40% to Douglas County. And the only thing we can speak to is how Douglas County will spend its money or collect its money out of the net proceeds. Those monies will be deposited into the parks account under the Room Tax Fund for a determination for your use and future budgets as they will be allocated. And so just to be forthright, and I don't want to, and I'll cover this a little bit on the next item too, that the only concerns we've had is how the school district is going to spend their money. I am confident how our boosters and parents' clubs are going to spend their money. They're going to buy playground equipment supplies, support special events and activities at their schools. They are legitimate nonprofit organizations. But with how the school district spends their money is really, to be frank, how the school district chooses to spend their money. And so have never, nor do we wish to speak for them. But I am very, very confident that the process that Douglas County uses through the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and staff have been very, very accommodating to public request and satisfying needs in the county for its parks and recreation programs, including Lake Tahoe. And so that is a little bit of history of why we are coming at this. We have a whole bunch of policies and, and procedures that we are implementing that Douglas County has never done before. And I'm pretty excited about the approach that we are taking up there to get ahead of this curve. And we're going to be pretty pleased to report some of those activities and how we can be successful in this. There's a lot to learn this year that we're going to be able to incorporate into that feasibility report to hopefully satisfy an isolated scenario that we think could be a U that can be used as a model throughout the entire basin for satisfying some of these global problems that have been ignored for years. And so really proud of the Park and Recreation Community Services staff for their involvement, for their attention and trying to get ahead of this and the amount of involvement that we've had. In particular, call out and shout out to the cooperation of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office for their support in this action. And that's all I have, Brooke. Did I miss anything?
Okay, before I bring it back to the board, I worked for the Sheriff Department before I took on this role. Sometimes we all make a mistake, but that's okay. For 15 years, I ran the patrol boat at, for Lake Tahoe out of Zephyr Cove. All of those 15 years, parking on Highway 50 has been a problem. The people that park on, on Highway 50, don't worry about the fines, don't worry about the tickets. But we are finally, as a county, thank you for your leadership in this, doing something about the problem at Zephyr Cove. We finally got a signal at Warrior Way that's going to slow some people down. I'm amazed that we haven't had more fatalities at Zephyr Cove. People walk across that highway with, with kids in tow, not even worrying about the traffic situation or worrying about that 18 wheeler coming down the highway. I am so delighted that we are getting ahead of this. And for those that think that the $305 citation for parking in, on the highway at Zephyr Cove, stand by because we're coming for your car. And that's going to happen. And having said that, I'll open it to the board for comment. Commissioner Noah Stat.
Just a question on the, the fee schedule itself. Is that part of county code? As in title blah, blah.
Commissioner Noah Stat, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. It is allowed under Title 13 of Douglas County Code, which is handles parks, which allows a process for the Community Services Parks and Recreation Director to establish and set fees.
The reason I ask is just above the Warrior Way changes or additions, I'm looking at the shooting range. And I use it quite often and every time I've gone in there since 2002, I paid a $2 fee. Now I'm looking at it, you see an entry of five bucks, not bad. But then to use the pistol range, 50 bucks. Use the rifle range, 50 bucks. Make me understand if I'm a resident of Douglas County that I got to pay that kind of, of, I won't call it what I want to call it, but go ahead.
Brooke 80, Community Services Director. Those are rental fees if you were to rent the entire facility. That is the, the hour, or yeah, the hourly rate that you would pay. Your $5 entrance fee gives you access to both of the shooting ranges without any additional cost, just $5.
Thank God for that. Long live the.
And Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, I would point out that those were board approved fees about a year and a half ago. And we made modifications to the Douglas County shooting facility.
So I had a couple of questions just from emails that I've had. One was that, and I can't find the email now, but it was something to the extent that the concessionaire, I assume this is Aramark if I'm pronouncing them right, that they've opened up a certain area for parking and what they control. Is that accurate and how does that play into our parking plans?
Brooke 80, Director of Community Services. We did meet with Aramark and talking about this plan that we wanted to bring forward as far as parking goes. They have not increased their parking as far as the additional space that they have been able to take over. But they have opened a second access point into the park with hopes to help with the flow of traffic and backing up on the highway. At this point, they do not have any additional parking.
Next question I had, and this seemed like a really good one and it's sort of probably, we don't have the right, the right intent, but maybe doesn't cover everybody. So this couple says they have a home in Lake Tahoe. They don't use it for short-term rentals or, or monthly rentals. But they only stay about five months out of the year, they're like the winter birds and so forth. I assume they're not considered residents or they wouldn't have asked me this. How would somebody like that who owns a home pays property taxes and is there for a significant period of time? How would they be included? Are they going to have to pay for parking? Is a way to exclude people who have a home that they're paying property taxes already up there?
The way the program, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, the way the program is outlined now, it asks, we'll ask you specifically, what is the county your vehicle is registered in? Is the determining without making a very complex program because we really want something simple. So if those folks do not have their vehicle registered in Douglas County, they will be assessed a fee. There will be opportunities if they are a library patron, if they are a Zephyr Cove Tennis Club member for them to potentially, and again, we've, we've tried to deal through a number of scenarios that we think we may paint ourselves into a corner. That is one of them, a second homeowner that has their vehicle registered in Texas, but pays property tax in Douglas County is something we'd like to keep track of. And potentially we're going to outline an internal process. If that person were to call Director 80 and go, I'm a Douglas County taxpayer. I, I vote here, but my vehicle's registered in Texas that I took down there. This doesn't seem right. And so we will be eternally allowing some type of appeal process. It's not our intention to, to nail Douglas County taxpayers. It's not our intention to get every single dollar we possibly can out of every single person we can. Our intention is here and clear to reduce capacity and the effects on the Zephyr Cove beach while covering our cost. And so that person is not something that we're necessarily trying to glean for. And so internally, if they want to take the time to appeal a $100 charge because they wanted to venture down there on the July the 4th, there will be an opportunity for that fee to be waived for somebody that can say, here's my tax bill. I, I am theoretically a resident, my car just isn't registered here. So there are a number of scenarios that we are trying to protect those individuals from. And they are hopefully be in place by the time this program goes into effect.
Okay, so I, I understand what you're saying. I just don't understand exactly how the appeal process works so I can make a correct statement to them. Do they have to appeal every time they want to go down to use it? Or can they appeal and say, hey, here's my property bill, I'm paying taxes here. I should be treated as somebody who's living here an extra month.
Commissioner Tarkanyan, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. For this year, they are going to initially going to have to appeal that particular scenario where they actually paid a fee to have that fee waived. And then the department can issue them a pass. We don't anticipate a lot of these scenarios coming forward on those, on those big weekends where we're going to have that effect. But they will be able to be given a pass or a code to use for future uses.
Okay, so that's good. I mean, I assume at some point this may come back to the board and we can vote on whether we think those people should be included in the charges or not. I'd hate to think somebody has to go in every day and every time they go down there and pay, go through another appeal process and go through this, there should be a way that you can go through.
There will not, we will give them a, in fact, if that happens preemptively, Brooke will be able to give them a pass code to use that they would enter in to be exempted from those fees. And as the feasibility report goes forward, there's going to be great energy into, to figuring out a system where we don't have a labor intensive process in the future. We want something to be a little more automated, something a little more clean. Because not only is it labor intensive for us, but we understand what a hassle it is for one of our homeowners to have to call in to get something waived. And then we'd be given that type of information to resolve that on this temporary one-year basis.
Okay, and my last deal is not a really question, it's just going to be a comment. And I understand there's a difference of an opinion for people probably maybe on this board. But I sort of cringe when you say we're going to raise the prices so that we can limit the amount of tourists up there. And I understand that's the main issue with a lot of people up there is over tourism. But are we going to, as a county, say that we only want the wealthy people to use our natural resources? Are we going to say that we're going to price out people that can't afford $300 a day in parking or $200 a day in parking? I for one, don't think that's fair. I don't have a better solution yet, but I know you're so brilliant that you'll come up with something that'll allow people that are maybe a little bit underfunded that could still enjoy Lake Tahoe.
Commissioner Tarkanyan, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. Yes, part of that answer. But no to the other part, a Douglas County resident will never pay. So regardless of your income or ability, but those outside the area. The answer to that, if you wanted to visit there on the Fourth of July, just like the rest of the world, it's going to come at a premium. But if you want to enjoy our natural resources and the Tahoe Basin and Zephyr Cove Beach, come on a Tuesday. And it'll be $20.
My question wasn't dealing with Douglas County residents, I understand that. My question deals with, you say, it's easy to say, hey, come on a Tuesday, but many of these people aren't retired. They don't have excess funds, they can't take a day of vacation off. You're going to tell somebody who has young kids that want them to see this beautiful part of Lake Tahoe, but you can't come on a weekend because you don't have enough money. I for one, don't think that's fair.
Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, I completely understand that. There's some YouTube videos that are circulating out there, what it looks like on the Fourth of July. And I guarantee you, if you have young children, this is not the environment or the day for you. It is not money that is going to price you out of that beach. It is conduct and capacity. And we are trying to seriously as best we can and as easily as we can try to reduce that impact so that it is a more enjoyable environment for a family to bring your children down there and try to contain and control or eliminate the behaviors that are currently taking place. Nobody wants to experience unless you are of a college fraternity. And maybe I'm inappropriately or wrongly targeting them, but or of a population that wants that environment. There's a problem there and this is the first step in trying to address it. This is only year one for the rest of our lives and for eternity on that beach to try to address that. And so this is a very quick and a very honest approach in our dealings. We are going to try to change the culture on that beach and create a more, a better environment. And as we move forward, we maybe can complicate things and allow scholarship or passes or there's got, there may be other ways to address that. But this year, unfortunately, if you want to come on a premium weekend, it is going to cost a premium with the specific intent to reduce capacity.
Mr. Gardner.
Are you, I don't want to preempt you, Mr. Commissioner Tarkanyan. Okay, I just, okay. First of all, I have a disclosure to make. I do sit on the, as the county representative, the Board of Commissioners representative to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This was discussed in the meeting, the last meeting I attended. And so I want the public to understand that I recused myself from discussion and from voting on this issue because I knew it would become before this board at a later date, which is today. So I wanted to make sure that's completely clear. Number two, I have been asked by a member of the public is whether or not we can display this page 513 on our screen for the public to see. Do we have that capability?
Yeah, yes, we do, it just may take a moment.
Okay. So I'll wait until we have that displayed, so.
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Gardner, we are moments away from displaying.
There we go, thank you. Appreciate it. So anyways, once again, I did, I did withhold any questions I might have on this until this meeting. I do understand that this is a pilot program and something that we really do need to try to get into place as fast as possible with the Fourth of July weekend approaching us. Several questions I do have. Do we, have we looked at the capacity of the Aramark parking lot? How many spaces they have and what their fee schedule is? And how does it compare with this?
Brooke 80, Community Services Director. Aramark has the capacity to hold about 230 cars and they charge $12 per day. And they have one flat rate for the entire summer.
And that includes Douglas County residents?
Sorry, they will be increasing over the Fourth of July. All visitors to the Zephyr Cove area do have to pay, there is no rate for Douglas County residents.
Okay, so it's, it's universal?
Yes.
Okay, but, but they do have a sliding scale also. They have the ability to do a sliding scale also as, as their demand increases, they can also charge a larger fee. Is that right?
Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. They have been given permission by the US Forest Service to charge an additional rate for the Fourth of July and Fourth of July weekend. But those rates have to be approved by the US Forest Service Tahoe Basin Unit.
How quickly can they do that, Mr. Morgan?
They are in the process of doing that now to get a rate for the Fourth of July. And I believe it may be between $25 and $40.
Okay. Obviously, we have recognized that Highway 50 has been closed down to, to parking. And the fee or the fine for that, the citation is in the neighborhood of $300 you indicated. Is that, is that?
305? Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, $305 and it is not all on Highway 50. If you park back in by, by reference, the old Dreyfus Estate entrance to Skyland, on that side of the road, there is allowed parking. Right after, on the other side of the road, on the mountain side of the road, right after the Douglas County Senior Center Facility, parking is allowed. And so we have worked with Aramart, they're, they're coming forward with an outdoor festival permit for the Fourth of July weekend at the next board meeting. We are conditioning their application to fence from the Skyland wooden fence all the way down to Warrior Way to encourage less illegal parking and less parking on Highway 50 and less illegal parking in the Skyland subdivision.
I'm, I'm happy that we've, and that's something I think we indicated as a board articulated earlier when there was a process or, or thought process of a, a, for lack of a better term, road diet in, on 50 and the safety factors, public safety factors of individuals parking on, on 50 and then transporting kids, pets and everything else down to the beach. That, that certainly is a concern. But as I understand it, some folks, as you indicated, plant it into their vacation budget to, they don't really care. They just won't go ahead and understand that if they get cited, it's a $300 fine and, and they really don't care. So I, that's disappointing that we would have members of the public feel that way. But it also, it concerns me where, where we had a tremendous problem last Fourth of July where just a tremendous amount of trash was left and these people that are, are being fined at $300 or even the, the $12 by Aramark just, just don't care. They see that, they see the ability to drop off their trash and leave their trash because they pay the fee to park their cars, which is disappointing to me. My, my questions on this fee schedule really, when I looked at it, and I, I think it's reasonable and I think it's a good idea to, to, you know, the, the, the high demand fee, the holiday fee. You know, with 800 parking places, I understand, right? So we'll see how, how that works. And, and once again, I understand this is a pilot program. My concerns, and I did express these to you privately after the meeting, was the, the two areas of non-resident library card holders fee and the non-resident tennis club member fee. What prevents, what safeguards do we have that a? that a non-resident who want, who wants to not, to, who wants to avoid the, even these, the $20, $40, $100, what prevents them or what safeguards do we have that a person isn't going to, as a non-resident, apply for a library card or a tennis club member fee? And then to avoid paying that and, and not using the library and not using the tennis club, but then taking that opportunity to go down to the beach? That, that's, I, I don't understand how that's going to be controlled.
We are working on, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, we are working on compliance now and, and plan on having personnel, as it sits right now, on some of those peak demand weekends. The only person that is going to be exempt from beach access will be a Douglas County resident. So if you're a Eldorado County resident in California and you hold a Douglas County library card, you're not going to be exempted from beach parking. But if you want to come to the library, you're going to be exempted from parking. So we just wanted to be clear for our users that we're not planning on charging library cardholders that want to use the library or tennis court users or park users or school district facility event users, that they're going to have to pay to enter the park. But if you want to enter the beach, the only people that are exempted from beach parking and beach parking access is a Douglas County resident.
Okay. Once again, I understand it's a pilot program and we're going to have to work through all the little intricacies of putting that program in place. But I just wanted to, you know, those are some of the nuances that, you know, are going to, going to occur and you're going to have to, and, and I'm just afraid of our community services manager, director, playing traffic cop up there on Warrior Way every weekend.
We're going to get her in orange vest.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't think she gets overtime, right? Okay, okay. So, okay, those are the only questions I have. But, and I'm so glad that we finally got a, a signal into Warrior Way because that really helps in public safety again, having people try to walk across 50 with all of that. Their beach chairs and, and all their other accoutrements, so, yep, thank you.
Any further, any further comment from?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. An issue comes to mind enforcement. How is these, how are these fees going to be enforced and the parking regulations being enforced? We're going to overrun our sheriff with more to do than he has already to do. And by the way, we have the same problem with VHRs.
Commissioner Nosa, that's Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager. Much of the time, it's going to be volunteer compliance on non-peak days. We do and are trying to plan for a compliance factor. We are going to, with the software that has been purchased to, to do a QR code text payment process. It will involve putting in your license plate number. We are installing this month car or vehicle license plate cameras that will record and send information both to community services and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, which will be real-time recording of when you came into the park, when you left. And although the two softwares do not meet, we will be able to determine and evaluate the compliance that we did get regarding the number of cars that entered, the number of cars that paid. During high peak and high demand, we are trying to have a presence to do demand at the entrance to ask for receipts as you come through at 100 bucks a car. Doesn't take long to pay for an, an individual, a private security individual to say, like to see your receipt for entering the beach. Show me your receipt. We'll also have real-time information from the parking lot payment program that they did pay with their vehicle license plate number. And so we do have a way to get compliance as people enter the beach. We don't really care when they leave, but as they come in, we do have a means of ensuring compliance. But on non-peak days, it just doesn't pay to monitor that. We are not asking the Douglas County Sheriff's Department to monitor who paid, who did not. We are asking Highway Patrol and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office to ticket people on Highway 50 to help us with unruly visitors and guests as we implement the party. And we've had a very firm commitment from all those parties to assist us in these adventures.
I, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of other comments. I'm sorry, I forgot. So thank you. Number one, I, I, I wanted also point out the fact something that's very encouraging is the restroom facilities. So that's, that's important. Rather than having individuals, tremendous amount of trees up there. I don't need to go any further than that, right? So the restroom facilities are, are, are good. Gosh, something else slipped my mind here. But, oh, I know what it was. I know what it was. We're not going to have volunteers handling cash. This is a cashless system, right? And so money, security, cash is always a, a problem with, with security. And so I like the idea that this is a cashless system as we're also dealing, we're also taking that out of, well, we've done it at Topath Lake and now we're doing it at the fairgrounds as, or the shooting range as well, right? So, so that's good. I, I like the idea of taking, getting rid of that cashless system or getting into a cashless system, I'm sorry, getting rid of the cash system. Thank you.
Mr. Ale.
So I'm not aware of the restroom situation that Commissioner Gardner referred to. I mean, the tree part, I got that, but is there something else?
Brook 80 Director of Community Services. The, the Parks Department has ordered Sandy Huts to be placed on the corner of Warrior Way when you're coming in so that there are additional bathroom facilities available for beachgoers as well as additional trash receptacles. So people are able to pack it in, pack it out, throw it away before they get to their car.
Thanks, and I'll make comments after public comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Aja Haynes from the Douglas County DA's office for the record. I just wanted to reiterate something too that was mentioned very early on in the presentation, but that this isn't, this isn't actually public beach parking. This is park property. There's an easement that the schools have for access to the schools. There is parking there for the park facilities, but really the, the purpose and intent of the access and the parking was, was never really to accommodate beachgoers. It was to allow people to access schools and schools are, I believe, still in session. During many of the summer months, when people are using the beach, there is actually school in session. So I, I don't think that the concept here was to prevent people from accessing beach parking or to make it harder for them to use beach parking so much as it was to control parking on what was never intended to be beach parking. This is a, this is Douglas County park property with an access easement. It's not, it's not even a, a public right of way and it's not a parking lot that was designed specifically for beach access. So there is a distinction there between this area and other areas of the lake which have been designed for beach access and parking.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? Saying none, this is an action item and we will open it to public comment.
Erin Miller, for the record, as stated earlier, I have three kids that attend these schools. I am also been part of Parents Club and Boosters since 2016, 2018. I'm actively on both of those nonprofit boards. I've actually been the chair or chair, co-chair of the Fourth of July Parking Lot Fundraiser. I'm in the weeds every Fourth of July since 2018. I spend three to four days, 12 hours a day at our schools, picking up trash, directing traffic, taking funds from tourists, dealing with tourists, dealing with very rude people, drunk people, possibly intoxicated on other items as well. It's not an environment that we enjoy our kids to be a part of. So typically, we do not have the little ones part of our fundraising efforts on Fourth of July. However, we do allow them to be part of our cleanups. So usually July 5th or 6th, we ask our parents to come and clean up and we allocate the funds received over the course of this fundraising event and we allocate it to both groups based on fundraising hours. And that's the agreement that will be talked about later. But in regards to this, it's a safety issue at the end of the day. Our schools are still in session until June 14th. When we have promotion ceremonies in our kindergarten and for our fifth grade and you have people who are utilizing the beach parking across the street in bathing suits nowadays that show more than they cover, playing loud music, being intoxicated. It's not exactly the best situation for these pre-kinders, kindergartners, fifth grade families to see. My fourth grader can see out her window and see the street and see all of this as well. It's just not a safe environment for our schoolchildren. So by the Parks Department, by the county getting together, I think it's a really good idea along with working with our volunteers and our residents that live up there who have been doing this, like Scott said, for more than 30 years. We just, we want our community to be safe. We picked up over 10 large trash bags on July 5th, going from Warrior Way up through all of those parking lots, through the softball field parking lots, through the library parking lots, through the tennis court parking lots, all the way to the top of Warrior Way, completely around to that high school parking lot where someone also made a makeshift campsite that decided that they were going to stay there for three days that nobody knew about because they hid themselves with cars. So again, this is a, it's a safety issue for our community, so I appreciate all of the support with this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brenda Hunt with the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District. I'm just, I think that this is amazing that you guys are, are doing this. I just wanted, I just see this as an opportunity to potentially do some outreach at the same time. And so I would, just was curious whether or not you guys had worked with the, the outreach program that I think TRPA put together where they have like, don't be a tosser advertising and outreach. And I'm, and you know, I know that we down here in the Carson River Water should have done a Recreate Responsibly video. And I'm just wondering if, if as a part of this, while they wait for their processing of their payment, they have to watch something like that. So I'm just putting it out there as an opportunity to see, to somehow get that outreach out so that they're not leaving their trash on the beach. Thanks.
Bye now. Miki Hempler, speaking as an individual. As someone that lives adjacent to the Zephyr Cove Beach and Skyland people that, you know, we kind of collaborate together, one of the questions that's come up over this is how we're going to handle people that don't want to spend the money that come into our neighborhoods and park illegally. Because it's my understanding in the past that it's very difficult to get a car removed from the street when they've parked illegally. So I just hope it's something that we can maybe depend on the Sheriff's Department if we need to call people in to help us remove cars. Because we're county roads, but we're managed by the GIDs. I'm not 100% sure how removal of illegally parked cars works. It's not something we've really had to deal with, but it is on the top of a lot of people's minds this year. Thank you.
Maureen Casey, speaking as an individual. I want to applaud the efforts of the Parks Department for collaborating with the boosters, with the school department and with residents up in Zephyr Cove and the adjacent neighborhoods. This is long overdue. I personally stay out of Tahoe during the summer. The traffic is horrible and trying just to traverse the roads up there with people backing in, pulling out, people crossing the roads. It's a nightmare. So Tahoe, no thank you. Not interested. And I want to say that people from out of the area coming up to visit, it's not our worry. I don't care if people coming up to visit Tahoe want to come up and visit our beaches. That's not our concern. Our concern are, are the residents of Douglas County. And we should not worry if people who come up to see the lake can afford the fees. It's not our concern. We have to take care of the people who live in Douglas County and the safety of the people in Douglas County and the quality of life of the people in Douglas County. And I think that the compromises that you have made for the residents and the fee schedule for the high tourist weekends, I think it'll work. I want to talk about what Mark said with regards to people with library cards. If someone comes in and just picks up a library card and wants to utilize the beach, I think that is a concern, that there has to be something more tangible. I know if you go to a county park outside of Douglas County in California, you have to show ID. There has to be a photo ID and there has to be more verification than just a library card. And I think somebody who has a home that they utilize once or twice a year, that's not enough. Just because you pay a property tax, if you don't live in Douglas County, you shouldn't be exempt from paying the parking fee. Thank you.
Greetings again, Jean Robinson, North Douglas County. You know, I want to say at the outset, the public is getting tired of one-off events like Fourth of July to have drastic, over-the-top measures on access put in on a year-round basis. So we want to be cognizant that we don't take a one-off event like Fourth of July and extrapolate that to a 12-month-of-the-year draconian access measure. We have to be mindful of that. So it is commendable that Douglas County is attempting to mitigate parking usurped away by our self-appointed access czars at NDOT by removal of parallel parking on Highway 50. Also, when the TRPA pursued a path of reckless urbanization, urbanization at Lake Tahoe, it unwittingly made Douglas County taxpayers, residents of Lake Tahoe, of Lake Tahoe. When taxpayer, when taxpayer-owned assets like schools, parks, libraries, there we go. And with schools, parks, libraries and administrative facilities were put in place, it codified access parity with Lake Tahoe residents. So yes, will Douglas County taxpayers be parking without hindrances of any kind at these aforementioned facilities? Yes, but will also not be paying or subjected to any reservation system? That's what I'm really looking out for, a reservation system. Furthermore, parking on Warrior Way and, and across from the school will be the exclusive, will be exclusive to Douglas County residents only. Pay-to-play parking will be elsewhere up the hill on Warrior Way. I, I shudder to think that I would get up and beat the mobs to Lake Tahoe early in the AM and cannot park because of some restrictive parameter in place that I, that I couldn't use the most accessible parking available, having arrived at 6:00 AM. If pay-to-play parking does come to Douglas County Park at Zephyr Cove, congestion pricing, peak period pricing or supply and demand pricing should not be part of this plan or using such revenue sources to launch discretionary spending plans. The parks are a finished product and other amenities are not needed. I also want to give this thing, I've also visited with public land visitors and they get the need for a reasonable quota of reservation access to facilities, but overwhelmingly oppose 100% reservation-only access parameters and reject excuses that keeping self-pay cash kiosks in place are too onerous. Current arrangements like that at the US Forest Service that follow these camps are unacceptable and that's an all reservation system where if an American doesn't have a credit card, if the end effect of that, of that rule is they can't go. And so we don't want a place where if you can't receive a QR code, And so we don't want a place where if you can't receive a QR code or don't have a credit card, that you simply can't go anymore. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I have no further questions or comments.
In that case, I'm ready for a motion.
I do have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm so pleased that you didn't let the perfect stand in the way of the good and that you're just moving forward with this right now. And last year, what happened on our beaches is so unacceptable. And and I know, I know this will be a little bit of a trial and error and figure it out. And that's okay, because just doing something is better than doing nothing, even if something isn't perfect yet. But it'll be perfected as we go. And I just am so happy that you did this quickly and that you gave, you found a way to have discretion embedded in it so that we could make adjustments as we go. And I'm just really want to thank you, and I think this is a very good step. And monitor and see.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? Saying none, I'm ready for a motion.
I move that we approve the Parks and Rec 2024 Program of Facilities Manual, which adds parking fees on Warrior Way, fees for the reservation of pickable courts, and corrects minor topographical errors.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments from the board? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. It's about doggone, I cleaned that up. It's about doggone time. Thank you. And I hate to do this, but since we got off to a slow start and it's now 1 o'clock, we'll take a one-hour break for lunch.
Mr. Chair, Scott Morgan, I think the next item can be very, very brief because it begs glee, coincides with the last item, if it, with your indulgence.
If there's no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to item number five. Okay, we'll do item number five and then we will have a one-hour break for lunch.
Did you also pull up the same map that we had? Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, contained in your packet is a one-year temporary agreement with the Douglas County School District for their consideration next week on the 11th. I'm sorry, AJ, the district attorney's office would like to interject.
Mr. Chair, if I could interject just very quickly. I just wanted to make sure we read item five into the record before we discuss it.
Thank you, my error, and I'm sure that a certain person will take note of that. All right, item number five for possible action. Discussion and approval of an interlocal agreement between Douglas County and the Douglas County School District for the implementation of a new parking program on Warrior Way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott Morgan, Assistant County Manager, members of the board. In your packet is a one-year agreement with the Douglas County School District to allow use for public beach parking on Zephyr Cove Park, Warrior Way, Zephyr Cove Elementary School, and George Wattel High School. Within that agreement is a shared liability, responsibilities, and distributes the gross, or I'm sorry, the net proceeds of the revenue collected on a 40-40-20 split, 40 for Douglas County, 40 for the Douglas County School District, and 20% with the first $30,000 being allocated to the Zephyr Cove Parents Club for distribution to the George Wattel Booster Club based on the number of hours worked on site. We have talked under the previous agenda item regarding the justification for such an agreement. And I do want to point out that this is a one-year agreement to get us through this year that we will be presenting to the Douglas County School Board on this, next week on the 11th for their consideration. We have vetted this through the school district. We have worked with the volunteer organizations, the neighboring property owners, and interested parties regarding to bring this forward on a relatively quick basis. And again, this is a pilot program with a one-year agreement. And I am available to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions from the board? Saying none, since this is a for action item, we'll open it to public comment. Are there any public comment on this item?
Erin Miller, for the record again. Again, I help with Zephyr Cove Parents Club and Wattel Boosters. What we do is we use a signup genius website and maintain who volunteers their hours. At the end of each of our fundraising events, then, once the funds are all collected, we allocate them based between the two groups. Our goal is to try to make sure that every week we have a cleanup group of there, possibly on Mondays. Also, on the Fourth of July, have a presence there to be the stewards or the ambassadors between the two groups. So that way, our tourists understand that even though we're not collecting the funds anymore, there's still a way to be collecting the funds through these apps. Also, so that the fact that we maintain that road, because the fire department does keep their medevac helicopter on Fourth of July up at the upper parking lot, grass area at Wattel. That's been our biggest concern, is making sure that that road stays clear so emergency personnel can make a swift transition from an ambulance to the medevac. We do get people who decide just to park wherever they want, so it's going to be nice to have some enforcement help with that. Last year, on Fourth of July, I had to shut down parking because we were at capacity at 1:30 in the afternoon. And instead of people leaving, they just decided to park in the right turn lane and get out and go across the street to the beach. So it'd be nice to have some extra enforcement in regards to that, why we're there, trying to be that steward and that ambassador. Again, our parents are more than willing to help volunteer with things like this and the cleanup efforts, so we don't have what happened last year happen again. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Saying none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Any further comment from the board? And if not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion.
Sir?
I move that we approve an interlocal agreement between Douglas County and Douglas County School District for the implementation of a new parking program on Warrior Way, as presented.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we will now take a 50-minute break for lunch. We'll come back at 2 o'clock. Okay, since we have all the commissioners back. And apologies, the restaurant is excellent, but there are only one guy serving. So it took us a little longer than we had hoped. So the next thing on the agenda is for presentation only.
Mr. Chairman, if you might have had a little less to eat, you might have been back quicker on.
Thanks, I needed that.
I saved my joke from this morning. I thought I'd throw that out.
All right, for presentation only. Presentation on Low-Impact Development Practices and Possible Revisions to Title 20 of the Douglas County Code. Courtney Walker and company.
This one?
Yeah. Good afternoon. Now I had anticipated saying good morning. Courtney Walker, for the record. I'm here with Brenda Hunt. She's the Watershed Program Manager for the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District. We're going to give a presentation on low-impact development practices, some of the benefits that they can bring in terms of water quality and recharging groundwater and things like that. There's a lot of different tools that can be used in regards to low-impact development that we haven't been utilizing very much here in Douglas County. Brenda has a presentation that she's given to several jurisdictions within the Carson River Watershed in regards to LID. And we're hoping that with filling you in on what these practices can provide benefits to different properties, we're also going to be bringing forward some Title 20 changes sometime in the future. I've been working on some language with our county engineer for Title 20 and also the design criteria to help kind of incentivize some of these practices. So Brenda will go through most of the presentation to talk about the various techniques that can be used and examples of them throughout the country and also locally as well. And then I also want to highlight a project that we did at Douglas High School, where we did an LID, Low-Impact Development Implementation Project with the high school students and how that we're hoping is benefiting water quality. And so we'll go through a bit of that as well.
Okay, thanks. I'm Brenda Hunt. For the record, I'm the Watershed Programmer, Program Manager, sorry, with the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District. CWSD is a by-state agency responsible for the integrated watershed planning process for the Carson River Watershed. I'm joining Courtney to discuss this low-impact development, or green infrastructure is another term that people use. And we've added a lot of pictures to the presentation. So when we're talking and when you're listening, please look at those because they speak a lot to what we're trying to achieve. So just some quick background. CWSD is the Clean Water Act Section 208 Water Quality Planning Agency that was appointed by the Governor's Office. We receive a small amount of EPA grant funding through the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection to complete 208 planning tasks. This report, Low-Impact Development in the Carson River Watershed, was developed with RCI and approved by CWSD's board in April 2015. It's based on a research conducted and provides easy access to LID principles, LID practices that work in our area, and steps towards implementing LID in our local jurisdictions. And it is available on our website, and I do have a copy here if anybody wants to look at it. In 2015, this report was provided to watershed planning commissions, boards of commissioners and supervisors, and as a briefing report to help start the conversation about LID implementation implementation in our area. And at that time, Douglas County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners decided to hold off on CWSD presenting this information. So however, in working with Courtney, now that the stormwater master plan is moved forward with some LID principles in it and the LID ordinance to promote these types of practices in the urban and rural portions of the county is being discussed, and the timing is better. So that's why I'm here. So implementing LID can be challenging in many areas of Nevada. Oh, sorry, not quite yet. As it is not a requirement to infiltrate stormwater runoff on site. So and as a decision-making body, the county commissioner board is, you have a unique opportunity to promote design changes and improvements in land use, including details relating to infrastructure, buildings, and landscaping. Your expertise can shape both existing and new development on the land and limit the costs and maintenance associated with a stormwater management system while benefiting water quality in our watershed. So LID is one tool to help stormwater needs and can be part of your suite of solutions to stormwater challenges. It's also important to note that the Carson River, including the East and West Forks that run through Douglas County, are listed as impaired water bodies under the Clean Water Act, Section 319. And the main cause of pollution is non-point source pollution or polluted runoff. We'll talk more about that during the rest of the presentation. Change, yeah. So the take-home message is, you know, we're hoping by the end of this presentation that you'll be, have improved knowledge about the possibilities of LID practices in Douglas County. And as stated, we'll show you lots of examples and discuss how planners and decision-making bodies such as yours can incorporate LID into their planning practice. Thanks. So what is the main goal of LID? These practices filter out pollutants such as oil, bacteria, sediment, and nutrients by allowing runoff to seep through onsite vegetation and soil. Urbanized areas within the Carson River Watershed can incorporate LID practices into their stormwater management repertoire and gain many benefits that enhance overall watershed health. So here's a few of the main benefits of implementing LID practices in the Douglas County urban areas. Reduces localized flooding, improves air and water quality by filtering water and keeping the soil covered, so it doesn't kick up dust. It can reduce the costs and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure because it's above ground and can be easily seen and accessed. It helps limit pollution into aquatic habitats. And we'll discuss more of that at the end of the presentation. And it improves groundwater recharge by slowing water and allowing it to soak in and be filtered into our underground aquifers. It can be beautiful, enhance our landscapes, including streets and parking lots, while creating shade to mitigate the heat island effect. So why do we care? So between 2013 and 2020, required, the NDP is required to go out and do water quality monitoring. And not all the water bodies throughout Nevada are evaluated, but those that are, many are too polluted to meet their designated beneficial uses. So suffice it to say, so here's some examples. 55-plus percent of all impairments don't meet the protection for aquatic life standard. 16-plus percent of all impairments don't meet the municipal and domestic supply requirements. And 14-plus percent of all impairments don't meet the recreation and contact pollutant standards. So the types of pollutants we're talking about are nutrients like phosphorus and nitrate, inorganic and organic toxins like mercury and selenium, pathogens like E. coli and fecal coliform, and other things like temperature turbidity, total dissolved solids, total suspended solids, pH, and dissolved oxygen. So in the Carson River Watershed, NDP's integrated report assessed 50 water bodies and 32 or 64% are considered to be the most impaired. That means that over half of the water bodies are highly impaired in this watershed. In Douglas County, both the East Fork and West Fork, from Carson to the state line, don't meet water quality standards. So where do the pollutants come from?
Yeah. Do you want questions as we go along?
Sure.
Okay. Could you say that again? From Carson to the state?
So from Carson's, so from the East and West Fork, from the state line, you can just, we'll say the state line of California and Nevada, down to the Carson City line, don't meet water quality. I just wanted to give it you that. There, it's broader than that, but for Douglas County, that is the fact, that none of them meet, neither one of those water bodies meet the standards. Many of our standards for water quality. So if you have a specific question, I can try to answer it, and I might have to get back to you with information.
No, just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah. So where do these come from? Really, from you and me, in a lot of ways. That's who, what non-point source pollution is caused from. And it's really your, you know, this polluted runoff comes from, it can be sediment. That can come from construction sites. And some of that might be natural, you know, coming from the California way up in the mountains as the snow melts. But in most instances, we're talking about things that you and me can cause. Fertilizers, salts, pesticides, herbicides, oil, grease, that type of thing. Next one. So this diagram kind of shows you how LID can work versus a storm drain that leads directly to our rivers, lakes, and streams untreated. So if you look at the way LID potentially can filter pollution as rainwater or snow melt slowly sink into the ground or even your irrigation water, for that matter. But otherwise, if you look at the gray funnel, it's basically shunting the water off, putting it into a pipe, sending it untreated right into our rivers, lakes, and streams.
Can I back up?
I'm sorry. That's okay.
So if they already, if the East and West Forks of the Carson River already don't meet the standards at the state line?
Oh, no. They from the state line down, yes. So from the state line, so you're suggesting that it's coming from California?
Well, I'm just wondering what I'm missing.
So there are a number of different standards that are on the California side. And some of them are not met and some of them are met. So it is basically the reaches that are in Douglas County don't meet a number of them as well. And I can get you the specific information if you want about which ones they don't meet and which ones they're meeting. And also look at the, there's a whole raft of other things called total maximum daily load. And you know, how, how, where we're meeting the standards there or not meeting them. And in most instances, we're not at this point, meeting the total maximum daily load standards either. So for for pollutants, so.
Because I mean.
Yeah.
Do you want to? I'll try. Courtney Walker, for the record, I think what Brenda's trying to say is where the river exists within Douglas County doesn't meet the standards due to what's going through the storm drain system being discharged into the river from our urban land uses, and that is what is causing it, not that when it enters Douglas County from Alpine County that it already doesn't meet the standards. It's from land uses that are occurring here in the Carson Valley. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I, I don't want to belabor or bog us down, but I, I, we'll have to just talk. But but it because if it already doesn't meet the standard when it gets to Nevada, I mean, I'm totally in favor of low impact development. But I don't see that changes in Douglas County are going to make meet the standards better if it's already, if there are, if the rivers are already not meeting the standard when they get to Douglas County. But that's it's it's, we don't need to spend any more time on it. I mean, obvious, to me, these are great practices and I I'm fully on board.
Okay. I will just say that there are some standards that are not being met from on the California side. They do have a different set of standards because it's through La Houghton, not through NDP. But for the most part, the things that we're talking about are coming from here, not necessarily from up there. So, okay. Okay. So just so you know what polluted runoff is, as it crosses impervious surfaces and hardscapes like roads, driveways, rooftops, that type of thing, the water can pick up and carry natural and human-made pollutants. These pollutants like oil, trash, fecal matter, soil, sediments, pesticides, fertilizers are deposited into our watershed, lakes, streams and wetlands and rivers, and eventually they can even get into our groundwater. So what are some of our goals? So we can minimize the amount of pollutants leaving a site by, and we're going to talk more about these specifically, so I'll just run through these quickly. We can reduce the amount of water produced and to slow it down, retain the water on site. LID principles can be adaptive and effective in urban, residential, commercial and industrial sites. They can even be in certain ranching situations. LID site design and layout is critical, and you'll hear more about that. Bio retention systems are really important, and some of these pictures will show you that type of thing. Swales and buffer strips, rainwater catchment systems and permeable pavers and porous pavement are some of the practices. So we'll go into more detail about those quickly here. So site design and layout. LID primary principles, all of these need to be considered. So minimizing impervious surfaces, minimizing natural ground disturbance, using the natural features that we have on a site and disconnecting impervious areas from storm drains and maximizing onsite infiltration and using water as a resource, not as a waste product. And I think that that's a critical thing for our area in particular because of we don't have a lot of water in certain times. And so we really want to use it as a resource, not as a waste product. So the more minimizing impervious surfaces, the more impervious surfaces and basically the more runoff. In planning or retrofitting projects, minimizing and disconnecting impervious cover, directing water to onsite infiltration areas is is important. Previous pavement or pervious pavement, sorry, or asphalt contains void spaces that allow the water to pass through. And these into like a sub base, and that allows the stormwater to be stored and infiltrated and filtered. So permeable, these are just more examples of permeable pavers there. You can get them in all different forms. Okay, so making those impervious areas smaller. So it's important to to direct water to onsite infiltration areas. The beauty here is that you use LID again to water your landscaping when it does rain in in Nevada. So this shows winter, some of this shows winter, and we all know that, well, this could be summer storms too. So Cabela's, the one in the bottom right, I know that's an old picture and these landscape islands have probably grown grown up a lot since then. But as you can see, they have curb cuts and it lets the water run into them. And then they are in a depression instead of a mound, so the water is captured there. It waters the plants during winter, that's an important thing as well. And Cabela's is kind of cool because they have a secondary swale that surrounds the whole entire parking lot. If you've ever been up there where you go again, you should look for it. So if we get some sort of a deluge, that swale is their secondary capture area. So if you, you know, the the parking lot gets inundated, then it goes to that secondary capture. So minimizing site disturbance, make your footprint smaller. So refrain from masquerading a site. Use the hydrology the site comes with whenever possible. It already works, use it to your advantage. You can even, you know, it can make a development much more interesting. So maybe you can even put it in your sales pitch. So a side benefit is also less dust. So masquerading destroys your natural drainage, it destroys natural vegetation and it compacts soil. And compaction is really difficult to overcome. So how do I minimize site disturbance? What do you do? So it's important that during the design and construction phase, work is done to minimize that site disturbance and protect and restore natural landscape features, including vegetation and that drainage pattern. Consider the natural hydrology and the native landscaping as an asset to assist with stormwater and water quality. Make this part of your permitting and your design standards. It's kind of like common sense, thinking about protecting your assets, thinking about it like that.
So Ms. Hunt.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Mind, especially on on the previous slide here, mass grading, the destroys natural drainage. We have, you know, four thousand homes that are planned in the in the Muller area, East Valley Corridor, Virginia Ranch, and then twenty-five hundred pretty much by give or take with park development. Certainly, the concerns of our county that have been expressed by a lot of residents is the compacting of soil to allow that development, which then prevents the natural saturation of the water that we may have through a storm or, you know, an event of that nature. So certainly, we want to make sure that that water has an opportunity to recharge our aquifer versus being eventually getting to the Carson River, of course, which doesn't give us the ability to capture that for farming, our farming community. So so what you're, what you're suggesting here is that we try to build some of these standards into our Title 20 I suppose to to mitigate the loss of that water. Is that, is that where I think we're going here?
Yes, and to mitigate where that drainage is happening. Because as we know, when your drainage gets changed, we we develop problems. And I think Courtney can speak to that more later. Yes. So it is really important in this situation to work with your contractors so that they understand the concerns and they've taken proper precautions to limit their footprint. And that there's a whole plans about, you know, best management practices associated with construction. So although this is a tire advertisement, it does show how driving compacts soil. Farmers know better than anyone, you know, that this impacts their bottom line. So these principles are critical to concern, you know, to consider in the design phase as mass graining and compaction will limit your future options. So disconnecting impervious areas from storm drains. So lid also is an opportunity to limit erosion, especially those impervious surfaces that directly meet bare earth or weedy areas for that matter, where weed seeds can be conveyed further downstream to neighboring areas. So having LID or green infrastructure areas that can slow the velocity of the water and utilize it for your landscaping will benefit water quality and make sense. So here you'll see that they have again curb cuts, so the water runs into a depressed area where the landscaping is and waters your plants. So planning and design, utilizing those natural features we've been talking about. So as stated, those existing drainage areas, it's most cost-effective and efficient to utilize those areas that are already existing and working. It requires a different maintenance, but it's naturally functioning already. It's also desirable from a potentially of development standpoint and from a wildlife habitat perspective.
So when you say plan and design utilizing natural drainage features, cost-effective, less maintenance. I guess my question there is how do these parking lots hold up to in when would normally be maybe a full concrete parking lot and you put this type of in? How, how does that, how do these surfaces hold up compared to what what we're doing now? What's?
So that it does require a different kind of maintenance and Courtney probably knows more about this even from her past previous experience, but if you have those pervious pavers, they do have interstitial spaces so the water can run through. So it's important to maintain those interstitial spaces. So often that requires different types of maintenance, like a vector truck, for instance, to come and vacuum those on a regular basis. And I believe Douglas County has them, has those already. So, yeah, that type of thing. And they have examples of this. I'm going to show you one, but they have examples of this up in Tahoe. Actually, at the TRPA offices, they have a small one. I haven't been there in a long time, so I haven't, I'm not sure what it looks like yet. But there is also one at the McKinley Art Center. That parking lot is a pervious pavement parking lot in Reno along the Truckee.
Okay. Courtney Walker, for the record, just to elaborate a little bit more on maintenance. Typically, in parking lots now, you have some sort of underground system that that you would maintain if someone asked you to maintain it, but it's out of sight, out of mind. And so oftentimes, these bigger underground systems do not get regular maintenance. And you would want to, the owner, property owner would want to hire somebody with a vector truck to clean that out for them. Some of the LID practices are above ground. They do utilize landscaping and in most businesses or commercial buildings, they're going to be maintaining their landscaping anyways. And so if the drainage also goes into those areas, there's an example. The Trinity Lutheran Church Parking Lot, it's right behind Sunny's Barbecue. They have utilized the LID with the curb cuts and the water from the parking lot flows into those curb cuts into the depressed areas where the vegetation is planted. And so your main maintenance there is making sure that your vegetation is still thriving. It's not getting covered up with sediments or anything like that. And so when you're looking at it, it's a lot easier to tell when you need to do maintenance versus the underground systems you kind of just forget about.
I've never noticed it before, but I'll be sure to look at it the next time I'm over there. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. You can move on to the next slide. Brenda Hunt, again, for the record. So this is just an example of a park providing beautiful and functional LID and maximizing that onsite infiltration. In the Carson River watershed, bio retention is probably the biggest bang for your buck. So we're talking about these types of things like landscape detention basins, swales, stormwater planters, rain gardens and tree boxes. So I'll talk a little bit about those. So this is just an example of a swale detention basin where water can run right off the parking lot into this area where it's, I guess, watering the vegetation again. Tree boxes, tree boxes for your, you know, city centers. These have curb cuts, so the storm, the stormwater drains into the tree box. Again, it's depressed instead of mounded. And it captures that and and it also looks pretty good. These are available, you can see these in one of the streets. I think it's the street that they have the farmer's market on in Reno that goes right by the Truckee. So that it's a good way if you wanted to go and look at an example. So this is actually a picture of a permeable paver road with a swale. And often people and are not aware of why swales are put into a neighborhood, but swales are a critical way to slow water, promote infiltration and filter stormwater before it enters the surface and groundwater. As we know, in some of our subdivisions in Douglas County and other places in the Carson River watershed, often people like fill in, fill them in and do that type of thing. And so, you know, part of it is an education thing too, is making sure that people know what they're there for and why. So rainwater can be harvested from impervious surfaces such as rooftops and driveways and directed to pervious areas and your rain garden areas. And these are just some more examples of that. The one on the right is again, an older picture of the McKinley Art Center. They did a whole LID demonstration garden up there. And that parking lot in the back of there is that impervious parking lot. So it's, if you ever wanted to go up there, this has grown up to be pretty impressive and it and it's worth having a look.
Yeah. Elaborate on rain. Okay. Courtney Walker, for the record, just to elaborate really quick on the rainwater catchment systems. A lot of these examples that were being presented can be used for new development, but you can also retrofit existing development. And so at my house, I know this is a smaller example, of course, but my my gutters on my, that would collect rainwater for my roof would go down and they installed them underground underneath my lawn and then it would discharge to the sidewalk. And so what I did is I disconnected that and I actually got some of those rain barrels from the Big Daddy's Bike Shop that they sell and turned them into rain barrels. And they look really cool and they do fill up pretty quickly. And then you can use them to water your houseplants or any other outdoor plants that you might have that are not connected to irrigation. And so on a smaller scale, you can also do things to harvest your rainwater so that it's not just being shunted out to the street, going into a storm drain and then into the river. Just to give a specific example.
Yeah, awesome. I have rain barrels too. Next one, yep. So from a planning and technical perspective, it's important to consider all these things during the design and planning stage. So reviewing and updating existing design standards and contradictions with LID principles. I mean, that's kind of what we've, what you guys are in the process of now because there's often landscaping requirements, especially in commercial areas to mound your landscaping and plant trees on top of mounds. And we know that that is not a good practice in our area because it takes a lot of water to, you know, have a tree up on the top of a hill and keep it watered properly. So thinking about making sure that you, there's not contradictions in in your ordinances. So existing hydrology and soil types and infiltration testing is really important. This is a double ring infiltrometer. This was actually at the pervious pavement that was done at the McKinley Art Center. And they said that it was very revealing and it was worth every penny to do that because it ensured that the infiltration was going to work properly under that pavement, that pavement. Because if it, if it isn't infiltrating properly, then you might need an underdrain. And it's important to know that before you put the pavement, the pavers down. So, you know, considering sunlight availability, depth to the groundwater and are you in a floodplain is really important. And designing with that maintenance in mind. So there are so many exciting options for and variety of uses. It's amazing if you just Google low impact development or rain gardens or anything like that, you'll be amazed at the the amount of creativity and the array of choices available. It's pretty mind-blowing. So Ed James, CWSD's manager, and I have presented the LID to the Building Association of Western Nevada. They were overall very supportive. Their main concerns are making sure that the regulations allow for creative solutions rather than a prescriptive, one, one-way option. And that the regulations are not contradictory and are consistent, even between local jurisdictions throughout the Carson River watershed. Because that gives them some certainty in what they're doing. So Courtney's going to discuss this cool local LID implementation project that you guys have here.
Courtney Walker, for the record, a couple of years ago, I applied for a grant with a couple of their partners to do this low impact development. to do this low impact development, planning and implementation project at Douglas High School. Kind of the catalyst for this project was the photo that you see on the left here is actually the east fork of the Carson River. It's right behind the Westwood neighborhood in Minden. And there's a pretty prolific algae bloom in that location. And interestingly enough, it's right where the storm drain system discharges to the river. It's existed for, for several years. And the USGS actually did a study to try to figure out what, what was causing the algae bloom. And they couldn't really come up with, with anything that they could point to. But based on the location of the storm drain outflow to that location leads me to believe that it had to do with land use. And so we wrote the grant, we were successful in getting it. So we did a bunch of site reconnaissance, found all the different storm drains within the Westwood neighborhood that were all directly connected to the high school as well. And so the photo on the right is me standing at that storm drain grate on the high school field. And if I were to turn around, you could see the baseball fields and the football field and the, the whole campus along with the parking lot and all of that. And so all of those storm drains connect to this spot, which then goes through the Westwood neighborhood, picks up all of the runoff coming from that neighborhood and then discharges it to the river right where this algae bloom is. So we wanted to use it as an opportunity to educate the students and also do a real life, hands-on project utilizing low impact development practices. This storm drain grate here is basically surrounded by bare soil. The maintenance staff drive around it. The soil is very compacted in that location and there's nothing to filter any of the water before it gets discharged into the river. So we were able to work with the students to do a variety of different activities in the classroom. We worked with the geoscience class, the environmental science class, the AutoCAD, they're like the engineering kind of drafting class. And then also with one of the English classes. And you might think English is an odd topic to bring into kind of a science oriented activity. However, they have really been successful in promoting the outreach and putting together communication materials so that we can explain what the project is. Because it is a really cool project, but it's a lot cooler if people actually know what you're doing and why you're doing it. And so that's why we involve the English class as well. So throughout the project, we showed them the whole storm drain system. They took a field trip and helped us mark all the different storm drains within the Westwood neighborhood. It says the no dumping drains to river. You can see all these different spots where we did water quality sampling up here in the top left. But that grate right there is in the Westwood neighborhood. And the football field that also drains to the same location. You can see the outfall here, which is actually on private property, but it very nice residents live there that let us access it. And then from that outlet is then the algae bloom. And so we worked with this, with the various classes to try to design a low impact development project for around this grate. And the grant covered the cost of the materials. We also used the stormwater maintenance operators to bring in their heavy equipment to help do some of the excavation, to break up some of that soil, put a bunch of rock around soil amendments. And then the students came in with the soils, planted all of the different plants and helped us finish basically the, the project. So now we, we have a lot of infiltration and filtering going on before the water gets into the grate. And then Douglas County crews also used our vector truck to clean out that storm drain system, which was all reimbursed through the grant through the state as well. So it was a really great project with the students. The last phase that they just did is the English class. One of their assignments was to design a sign to be put out at this location to explain the project and how it benefits the river. And so that sign has recently been installed right here at this project site. If you are interested in accessing it, I know you live close to the site. You can, there's a gate that is, that comes off of Longleaf Drive and you can actually walk right onto campus, right up to this location. And you can see the project. The native plants are thriving. The, the school district maintenance staff was wonderful and installed irrigation for us so that nothing will die and you don't have to go there and water it regularly. But it's been a very successful project. The students were very engaged and it was also nice for me to put some of my maintenance staff on the spot as well to kind of talk about career options here in Douglas County that don't necessarily require a college degree. They're outside all the time. They love what they do. And so just kind of opening the kids' eyes to some more local opportunities for career options here locally. So it was a really great project. I encourage you to, to check it out if you're ever in the area. We are hoping to do a phase two of this project and expanding it to other school sites. We did find out that we didn't receive that, that grant unfortunately. But I would like to, to keep going with this kind of project because it is really valuable. And I have a photo actually at the very end of the presentation that shows the photo or the algae bloom today. And it's actually a lot less prolific. I'm sure it's not because we saved the world with this project. But our water quality monitoring that we've been doing over the last few years has shown a slight reduction in the nitrogen and phosphorus. And we've also done education in the neighborhood as a part of this project. And so I think with all of those things, maybe it might be helping out a little bit, but we know it didn't make it any worse. So that's the cool project. I'd like to do some more demonstrations in Douglas County so people can see and visit the sites to kind of see, give them ideas on how they could do it on their own property. There's the finished product right there. And there's a nice educational sign next to it. That's not shown in this photo.
Brenda Hunt, for the record. So I wanted to leave you with a few recommendations before we end with final thoughts. And again, as the community decision makers, you have that unique interdisciplinary role to play in the implementation of LID in the, in the county. We hope this has inspired you to support LID in your planning processes. And Courtney has included LID principles again in that, in the recent stormwater plan and will be coming forward with the LID as a solution to stormwater concerns in the future. We are really hopeful that maybe there's the possibility of implementing LID in some of your new projects, even county projects. And I know you have a new county courthouse. So I just wanted to put a plug in for maybe this being a demonstration project as part of that, if that's possible. So just with final thoughts, LID practices are common sense approaches that respect water as an essential resource and they offer interdisciplinary opportunities that benefit everyone and everything. So thanks and we'll take any questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And any questions on Commissioner Gardner?
Just, just a comment. Thank you very much. Very enlightening and very eye opening. So I'm hoping that maybe we can take a look at implementing some of this where it's applicable in your county. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just think this is great. I think we need to, I think I understand that we're incorporating this in the changes to Title 20.
Yes, Courtney Walker, for the record. I've worked with Jeremy to, Jeremy Hutchings, our county engineer, to do a bunch of draft language that can be incorporated. I'm not sure what the timeframe is with community development wanting to bring that forward. I know they're doing a lot of substantial changes to Title 20. And so it will fit into the mix. And so when the timing is right, we will bring it forward. It might be good to bring it forward a little separately just to discuss the new sections that are being added. But it's in the plan and I was actually hoping these, we presented to the planning commission and now to this board. And I'm hoping this will kind of jumpstart the process to, to get some of these things in code so we can start using them as soon as possible.
I really like the idea of the common sense idea. And I like the point that was made about not allowing for creative solutions. So if the principles involved take precedence over the technicality, technicalities, that would be a really good thing. But I really would really support implementing these principles. I'm a fan. Good job. Thank you.
Any further comments from the board? Seeing none. Thank you so much for your presentation. Since this was for a presentation only, there will not be public comment. And we will move on to item number seven. Okay, item number seven for possible action. Discussion regarding the adoption of Resolution 2024 R-053, a resolution amending and establishing certain rates, fees and charges for services provided by the Douglas County Community Development Department as provided for in Douglas County Code, repealing Resolution 2021 R-096, which established and amended the rates, fees and charges for the department set in 2021. Community Development will present two versions of Resolution 2024 R-053 for the board's consideration. Version one would immediately increase the fee scheduled by 14% on July 1st, 2024. Version two would gradually increase the fee scheduled by 7% on July 1st, 2024 and 7% on January 1st, 2025. These increases are based on the Western Urban Consumer Price Indexes, CPI, combined increase over the last two years, 2022 and 2023. Andrea Pauling and Mr. Delair.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Andrea Pauling and Tom Delair from Community Development today. Commissioner Chairman Rice just went ahead and read into record the suggested actions. So I won't bore you with that long paragraph again. We will be, we will be discussing the fee increase and the resolution of 2024 R-053 and the repeal of 2021 R-096 today. There are two versions as you guys, as you guys read. And we will go over those in more depth and answer any questions at the end.
I'm sorry, just wanted to ask a quick question so I don't get lost when you go through your presentation. In your financial impact, it says to recover the $842,000 shortfall. That's quite significant and is 14% covering that? Is that what you're saying?
No, Tom Delair for the record. So we have a budgeted that shortfall is what, is what the projection is. We historically have budgeted a shortfall in our budget, but this year we are, I'm not sure we're going to make our estimated revenue projections that we had last year's budget. We're, we're a month away from this. So, so what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is, is, is be a little proactive with this application and do 14% now. This fiscal, this next fiscal year started in July 1st for next fiscal year's budget. So we won't, we will only have one year of actual revenues that do not exceed our expenses in the department. So, but we are projecting that we are going to be short this year. And then our budget that you guys presented, and we wanted to make sure the numbers were consistent with you and the public. But in our budget, budget presentation that we did a couple of, well, about a month ago, we, we showed that shortfall in that budget presentation of 20%. Is that, yeah. And, and we are in the fiscal impact statement. We did show that we can recover about $475,000 if we implemented the 14% in July for the whole year or $360,000 for the, the split between the two years. At 475, 475,000. That's on page 635, the top of 635. And yes, is that? Cool. Thank you.
All right, Andrea Pauling, for the record again, Community Development. So what we want to go over here is, so what's the big goal? So we want to ensure that our community development's fee plan, fees will pay for staff time reviewing permits. We did a fee study with RCS Resource Concepts, Cost Concepts, and we will go over that a little bit more with you a little bit later. But we want to make sure that the hours that the staff are actually working on permits, that we're calculating that and that we're getting the fees to compensate for that time. Right now, the fee schedule needs to be increased on an annual consistent basis and equitable to the needs of our community, staff and customers. We are proposing that we evaluate it on an annual basis. Not that we necessarily will have to increase it on an annual basis. Right now, we have not increased fees since 2021. And at that point, it was an overall of 5%, but we have not increased anything since then. The Douglas County Community Development Department is, as Mr. Delair just mentioned, we're about a 20% short of paying for the salary costs in the department. And because we need an increase to cover that, over the last two years, we looked at the Western Urban Consumer Index. It was increased at 7.7% in 2022 and 6.3% in 2023, which gave us the total of what we're proposing today of 14% increase. Based on these numbers, we are proposing an increase of 14% overall to compensate. Again, we give you the two options that we'll go over later again on how you want to do that and how you want to implement that. And again, it will compensate for that time and effort of community development and how long it takes us reviewing community plans, proposals, permits, things like that. So just a brief history, I'm not going to read this. I'm not going to read this word by word. Like I said, we have not increased our fees since 2021. We had two resolutions at that time. One was increasing building permit fees at a 5% overall. And the, the next one is the one we're repealing today was a 5% increase on other fees such as planning, engineering, et cetera. The Board of County Commissioners at the time adopted the resolution and approved the 5% increase. So since 2021, we have not increased our fees, but we do want to remain equitable within the county's growth and development. Salaries were increased to be in line with other jurisdictions in Northern Nevada. Unprecedented inflation has taken its toll on services and supplies that are needed to keep up with the demand of the department and managing plans and permits being issued. Something I do want to mention here, that is our brief history, but something I want to mention currently, as we were going through our fee study with RCS, we realized that we were basing it on estimated numbers of staff hours on, on certain projects that they were working on. We have now implemented something in our software system of Acela currently to manage exact actual hours so that we can present that in the future and actually have a, an actual time that we are working on certain projects. And then I'm going to turn this slide on over to our director, Mr. Delair.
This is, this is where we, we came up with the concept last year when we received this report from RCS, where this shows that the building department and safety services, the second line down in that table where it is, it, we're at 107% of the actual fee. So the building department is paying their fair share and we're supplementing the planning services and the engineering services. I think the code enforcement services is something that the general fund would, would cover. And it's because they're not actually reviewing project, project permits or alloc, or, or project applications. And so they are actually enforcing the code, which I think it would be a more of a general fund function similar to the sheriff's office. But, but we want to raise the fees for the planning and engineering services. And that's what this proposal does. Based on the two fee schedules that we are, that we are reviewing. One of them is the building one, which we did 5% across the board in 2021. Andrea's covered that, but we did have that and we are not touching that building permit one at all. What we are, what we are proposing is the, the planning applications and those permit processes are increasing. And the engineering applications and permits is what we want to cover in this cost increase. We have the total permits on, on this is basically. We have, the total permits on, on this is basically, basically just a chart. We just show the, what we are issuing for the building permits and all the others. So it's, I think that's a combined total applications reviewed between, for the entire department. I think you guys have seen this, this slide before at the budget cycle as well, but it just gives you a breakdown of, of, of really the differences between the building and all the other applications. They are longer, the applications in planning and engineering are a much longer process in, in, in plan review and dealing with the consultant on making sure that we're complying with code and that we have a permissible set of plans that we can issue. And, and that process is substantially longer than what it would be in, in like a building permit. Once the lot is available to be built on, the, the plan review is a lot faster process to go through and to get your permit for that. It's all the applications that get that lot to be a developable position and so that you can just apply for a building permit and build. So that's what we're talking about here today. There was some, we had a lot of conversations, what's the next slide on, on this one? Oh, yeah, so, so on the option, let's just go there. So we have, we had a lot of conversation with the Builders Alliance, and also back and forth with, with Douglas County Business Council, the chamber on this, on our outreach portion of this piece of it. And, and we originally came up with the version one, which was fourteen percent. The, the Builders Alliance had some significant concerns about that cost and wanted to propose this version two. We came back and talked about it with the County Manager's Office and the staff, and we decided, let's just give it those two options to you guys, and you guys could decide on how this would go, on which one we're actually going to implement. But what their concern was is just that, you know, the impact that it's going to have on the business community and doing business in Douglas County and, and those, those fees associated with the, the entitlements to be built. It's not the actual building permits, but they were, they were a little confused in the beginning that they thought the building permit fees were going to increase as well, and, and that was not the case. So we clarified that with them, and I think they're on, on board with the version two. So that's, that's why we had proposed the two versions, and that's why you have two of them today, is because the Business Council and specifically the Builders Alliance, Glenn Martel and, and Rob Joyner, both, both wanted to see this seven percent in, in July and seven percent in January be implemented. But overall, it'll be a fif, fourteen percent increase by the end of the year. So I, I think we're good with either way. I can't predict and don't have a way to predict who's going to submit to the Community Development Department for applications. That is part of the budget process and, on estimating, and we're trying to implement and work with the Finance Department on coming up with a better kind of prediction model, or maybe it's a five-year average over the last five years on, on what kind of permits were submitted, because you can go through this, this table and see that there's a lot of different types of applications that we have. Yes, Commissioner Tarkanyi?
So I'm trying to get, wrap my head around this. Even if you do version one, you're still going to have a two hundred and, I'm sorry, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar or something like that shortfall?
Well, it's, it's budgeted, it's the budgeted shortfall that we have today. And, and right now, what, what usually happens in our budget cycle is we budget low on the revenue side, and we show our expenses that we need to have for like the master plan updates and all the, the other plan updates that we usually are working on throughout the year, and, and then all the consulting fees we have in our support of reviewing these projects. And we, and we budget that out through, in, in March of the year for the next fiscal year stuff. But I have no way to know who's going to be coming in for a building permit or for a master plan amendment or for a zone change. We don't have any way to predict that. Alls we can go off of is what's happened over the last five years. And, and the, we have historically budgeted a shortfall in our budget, just not that substantial. And so that's, that's why, that's why we were thinking the fourteen percent would be sufficient. We'll try it and see, make sure it happens. I mean, we see what happens with the, with the applications and the submittals. And then we'll know at the end of next year where we're at, and we'll put that in our averages for the next year's budget cycle for twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, and, and see if we can, we can get closer on those estimates. But I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know how many people are planning on building next year, and, and we don't know what the market's going to do during the election. So, see what happens. Is that, okay?
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is a real conundrum. You know, and I appreciate the thoughts of our building community in regards to spacing it out. So I don't want to be insensitive to that, as we've, you and I have discussed, Mr. Delair. My concerns, of course, were that, I mean, fourteen percent seems like an awful lot of money, a, a large increase. However, we haven't had an increase since the middle of 2021. And if we had been reviewing this on an annual basis and coming back with, you know, and five percent back in 2021 was just a, a small amount, really, in, in the overall scheme of things. But if we had been doing the five percent a year for the last couple of years, then, then we'd be back to another five percent increase, as I see it. If we had done five percent in 2022, five percent in 2023, then we would be looking for a five percent in 2024, and, and that's fifteen percent over a three-year period. And so we're trying to play catch-up here, and I think that's, and I, so I appreciate your concept or thought process of reviewing this on an annual basis. And that's something I, I suggested to your department, is that we not play catch-up all the time on this. The problem I, I have with this, of course, is that when we do project a, a shortfall, then we're making that up out of the general fund. And every taxpayer in this county pays into the general fund. And I don't know that it's right to take funds out of, out of the taxpayers' pocketbooks, basically, and supplementing these, these fees for the developers. So there's, there's the conundrum we're in. And, and so, you know, all we're trying to do is play catch-up here. And, and, and we're going to have, we are going to need to look at this on an annual basis, not, not just, just every three years, because costs go up on an annual basis, not, not every three or four years. So, I suppose I could live with either case, but, you know, I, I want to listen to public comment too.
I just wanted to ask, following up on your questions, what, why have we not, if we had a shortfall each year, if I'm understanding this correctly, why didn't we increase it since 2021? Why, why are we not, just now doing it?
Tom Delair for the record, I, I don't, I don't, we haven't had a shortfall for every year. This is the first year that we are projecting it, and I suspect it's because we've got, the salaries were up, you know, increased quite a bit last year. And so now that, that, that's caught up.
Misunderstood you, I thought you said each year we had a shortfall and then we?
This, this fiscal year. Last fiscal year, we were fine, we budgeted a shortfall, but we ended up and land, and finishing the year off good. But the Building Department does supplement the planning and Engineering Department. So we have seen that, that hasn't been a trend for the last five years. The, the, it really became noticeable in that, in RCS study that we have. I, I know I haven't shared that with any of the board yet, but those, the costs that they were proposing in there are a substantial increase. And, and this is like a step in that direction. And what we found with going through this whole exercise is that we needed to develop a way that staff can track how much time they're spending on a specific application so that we can put a, a permit fee to it and get, I just need the data, and I don't have the data yet. We just got that implemented in Acela, the TruePoint contracts that you guys have just approved today on consent, that will help refine that process. And, and so those are the kinds of improvements that we have been doing in our permitting program in order to get better data so that we can make these decisions ahead of time rather than in the rears.
Any other questions from the board? Saying none, this is a, for possible action, so I will open this to public comment.
Since I'm one of only two, I got to make a comment. Jim Jackson, sounds like somebody's been asleep at the switch. If we've been increasing salaries and not increasing, increasing the fees, the obvious conclusion was is that you're going to end up with a shortfall at some point. Fourteen percent right off the bat is a no-brainer, do it. But why stop with that? Why not the building permits also going up? If Carson Valley is such a hot commodity, like everybody keeps saying, everybody wants to build and stuff, why not make the builders and the developers pay for these fees and these permits? Don't take it from us, the taxpayers in the valley, and it's coming out of the general fund if you're short. Take it from these builders, they'll pay it because they want to build and develop here. They're going to make their money back, you know? I have no fear of that and everything. So that's my advice, is go for the full fourteen now, and don't leave out the other permits where you can make money off of them too. Let the developers pay for what they're going to do to this valley. Thank you.
Are there any further public comment? Saying none.
Mr. Chairman? Just, just to answer your question, we, we increased salaries, I believe. And the ones for the county staff are similar to the, what we did for the deputies, and so we increased it close to thirty percent over the next two years, is that right?
Tom Delair for the record, I, I believe it was, I don't remember how much it was, do you remember? Seven, seventeen percent?
So with the point I'm trying to make, it's, we, we negotiated our salaries this past year, and the one reason why our budget is so tight and everything else, because we gave large increases to try to stay up with the, the market, and that, that's why this year we're so short, if I'm understanding correctly, with this cost, because of the increase in salaries this past year. And if I understand your, your pack deal, and I've looked all over my pack, because I can't find that one that you just had up there. I'd like to get a copy of it where you listed how much was raised and how much was spent in each of the, the building permits, the engineering and so forth. Is we, the building permits are covering their costs, we shouldn't be subsidizing it. It's the other two areas that are not covering the cost, and we're trying, and we don't want to subsidize that either. So I just hope the fourteen percent gets us to where we're not subsidizing the costs, and we're relying upon your expertise for that.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, so Tom Delair for the record, also, there's a lot of things that I do at my job that I don't get to do project review, right? I fix the problems during the review, a lot of meetings, I get a lot of requests from you guys on other things, you know, that we are working on. So a lot of that stuff isn't covered by a permit application, right? And so that's what I've been trying to figure out in the department on, on how do we, how do we manage that part of it? Because it's not just me, Andrea spends a lot of time on, on, on specific projects like this. You know, the fee studies, those kinds of things where it's not based on an actual application. Our county engineer is working on Mueller Parkway, I think he's, all his time is going on that right now, which is, again, not an application. We do have it internally that will get reimbursed for some of that stuff because of a permit fee, but it, right now, we're, we're dealing with those kinds of things and tracking that. And then code enforcement is out, and VHR is paying for itself. So that's, that's, that's good, and one step in the right direction. And we, and we've gone a long way this year to, to track those and make it easier for us to pull a report out of it in like the VHR department, so. Yeah, the building permits, though, that was also mentioned. Our building permits, when you guys approved Appendix B, we changed the way we do our evaluations on those permits, and we want to see what that's going to look like. Our estimates are, it looks like it's going to increase the commercial quite a bit. I don't know a percentage, I don't have a percentage on that, but it, the commercial square footage went up substantially with that. Increasing them further doesn't seem to be logical, and I have a history of five years showing that the department, the Building Department, with all of our inspectors, our, our building official and our counter texts, that they are covering the costs and some in the department, which is why we were not proposing to increase the building fees right now. And I want, I want to, I want the, what we did with the Appendix B to clarify that, that valuation. I want that to, to go into effect for at least a year, so we have some, some background on that.
Andrea Pauling for the record, also, we'll be, when we evaluate this on a year, annual basis, we'll be evaluating the building permits and, and that side of things again next year as well.
Thank you. All right, with the pleasure of the board.
So I agree with Commissioner Gardner that this is a conundrum. I can see this both ways. I am sympathetic to the Builders Alliance and the Business Council's concerns that this is a big jump all at once, fourteen percent. However, you know, the, the, the costs of, the other costs of business don't go up according to, you know, an eased-in scale. The, the cost of doing business just is, is what it is. And I, I, in the ideal world, the cost wouldn't jump this much, but, but, but they are our costs. And I think there's been a good faith effort to link our costs with the fees. And this isn't, this isn't an attempt to gouge, it's not an attempt to get more than what our costs are. It's just an attempt to, to make, make it even between what it costs us to do these permits that need to be done and, and what's being charged for them. And to me, it is kind of a close case, because I hate to see the, a big jump all at once for these folks. But I, I even, even more, I hate to see the general fund subsidizing the building that, that's going on and, and the other things that are going on. And because the general taxpayer shouldn't subsidize these things, it, they should pay for themselves. And so for that reason, I would lean more towards version one, but I would also be amenable to being persuaded otherwise if my colleagues had good reasons.
All right, Commissioners, with your pleasure. Does somebody have a motion?
I closed my computer, so I don't have the exact language, but I think we should go with version number one. That's what our out-of-pocket cost is, and as much as it may have some impact on the builders, it's, it's better than having the impact on the general fund.
I'll make a motion then. I move that we adopt Resolution 2024 R dash zero five three, which is version one, immediately increasing the fee schedule by fourteen percent on July 1st, 2024, and repealing Resolution 2021 R zero nine six.
Second? It's been moved in second, and any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes four oh. And for the record, Commissioner Noah said to leave, he had a hard stop time. So we will move on to item number eight for presentation only. Announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and or commissions that they may be a member of or a liaison to, or meeting functions they have attended and any request by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. And I will start at the far end and work towards this end. Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'm assigned obviously to a, a number of, uh, boards and commissions besides this, uh, responsibility as a board of commissioner. Um, so, uh, anyways, uh, yesterday was supposed to be our, um, monthly Chamber of Commerce meeting. However, that got postponed or actually canceled in favor of, we have a planning session tomorrow. So I'll be involved all day tomorrow in regards to that planning session. Um, the other things I've already reported on at Parks and Recreation. Um, it was this last month, uh, our NACO meeting, Nevada Association Counties Meeting was in Eureka and, um, to honor, um, retiring State Senator Pete Gokicchia. And so I felt obligated to do that. So it was a disappointment that I wasn't able to be at the opening ceremonies of the moving wall that, uh, Vietnam, uh, moving wall replica of the, of the Vietnam wall in Washington DC. Um, but it appears that the, my fellows, uh, commissioners filled in very well in that regard. I did take an opportunity to visit, uh, that hall, uh, and participate in the community barbecue on Saturday or Sunday night, and then again at the closing ceremonies on Sunday or Monday. So, uh, with that, um, I just tried to fulfill all those responsibilities and, uh, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir.
I haven't had any committee meetings since our last, uh, board meeting.
I'll mention that, um, in regards to China Spring Youth Camp, um, there have been, there has been work, um, on the budget for next year and, um, work towards making sure we have, uh, funding, including a meeting with, um, some folks at the state. And I feel that, uh, Wendy Lang is doing an excellent job there. And as is, as is the new director. I appreciate Carson Waters Sub Conservancy District that, uh, we just had the annual evaluation of the director there and he does an excellent job. And I appreciate their good work. They have their fingers in a lot of things, including what we just listened to today. Um, I was able to go to the TRPA annual retreat where they talk about bigger picture things, take a step back from the day-to-day work. And that was very useful in terms of understanding better what they do and being more prepared in case I need to serve as an alternate there. And besides those things, I have attended the regular meetings of the other entities and appreciate the good work being done.
Thank you. I also, uh, was able to attend the TRPA retreat. It, it was held at Falling Leaf Lake and, uh, a great deal of ground was covered. And, um, my one comment would be, please cover your potholes. Uh, that's what the worst road I've seen in the, uh, in a very, very long time. And I'm sure that my teeth will get settled back into place Yesterday I attended the, uh, the TTD meeting, Tahoe Transportation District. Uh, they are still trying to, uh, figure out, um, how to, uh, increase their revenues for their free public transportation. Uh, I, uh, have scheduled a meeting with, uh, the, uh, Carl Hastings, the, uh, the Hasty, the, uh, the head of TTD. Uh, I want to talk to him in private. Uh, they keep talking about, uh, a JPA and, uh, Joint Powers Act to, uh, take over all of the, uh, transportation in the Tahoe Basin. And, uh, I for one am not willing to give up control of our transportation that we have in Douglas County, uh, to let some Californian, and I just, uh, gonna make some enemies with that statement, uh, make some Californians determine for us what we're going to do for our transportation. Uh, also once again, they're talking about, uh, establishing a basin entry fee. Uh, I told them that, uh, before I would vote for that, I would have to divorce both my county and my wife, uh, because she said, uh, you, you vote for that thing and don't bother coming home. But, and that's in jest, please, for those that take everything literally. But I want you to know that I, uh, am going to find a basin entry fee for any resident of Douglas County as long as I'm sitting in this chair. And I am also, uh, going to, uh, do everything I can to make sure that if there is a JPA, that Douglas County does not lose our autonomy. And that's the end of what I had. And so now we will go to agenda item last, closing public comment.
Me again. Jim Jackson. Good decision on the 14%. Don't let it go every year without raising it. Don't get in that position again. One of the main reasons I am still here is I want to offer an apology to Commissioner Hales that I did not mention your name. I honestly didn't see you there. And so that's the only reason I left you out, but I appreciate the fact that you were there and everything. So, um, several things were said on other presentations. One of them was, it was commenting that it was, this was regarding something up at the lake, that you're doing something now and not waiting until later on. Well, everything I do is related to Painted Rock Mine. So it's like, let's do something now before it's too late, whatever that may be. The second thing that was said by one of the people that got up here was county residents come first and everybody else can come second. Well, that was in regards to July 4th up at the lake and with all the fees or whatever it was. Well, I kind of agree with that. And again, I relate that back to Painted Rock Mine. County citizens should come before Knox excavation and all the money they will make and all the problems it will cause us. That relates back to the first item, something needs to be done now. Coming down to the landscaping, I think it's a very good idea. Our whole property is landscaped with that kind of stuff in mind. We have a big dry stream bed that comes all the way from the top of our property halfway down and then a big, what could be a lake. I have train bridges that are crossing it. And it does fill up when we have a really heavy thunderstorm. So that's a good idea. But it was talked about minimizing site disturbances because of what it will do to the water. Well, Painted Rock Mine is going to disturb a whole lot of ground and everything, not only at the site, but all the way down across the BLM and down Johnson Lane. It's going to just really do a lot of damage. Uh, other things was it will destroy natural drainage. Well, that will, because if they paved the road from Painted Rock Mine down to Johnson Lane, that's going to cause some real flooding problems up there for us. Then the other one was destroy vegetation. It's going to destroy a lot of vegetation up in that area also. So we're hoping that something can be done. We know we're going to end up in court. We're just hoping that you're on our side when we do end up in court and stuff. And I've mentioned this before. So, um, anyway, I'm waiting to see what we're going to do with Painted Rock Mine. And again, thank you three commissioners for being at the meeting. Uh, there were several good ideas that came up and I hope we take advantage of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further public comment? Saying none. I entertain a motion to, uh, retire for the day. In that case, we are done.